We'll start. Steve is ill tonight, and so I'm going to be stepping in as chair. Andrea's not making it tonight, so this is what we have tonight for attendance. And yes, please be advised that the meeting may be video and audiotape, so if you are addressing, you have to use a microphone, and please tell us who you are. We're going to start with the Cody Pet Hospital signage special permit hearing. Do we have to open that?
Yeah.
Notice is hereby given in accordance with Mass. General Law Section 48 in Norfolk Zoning Bylaws Section F 9 V 2 that a public hearing will be held on Tuesday, January 6, 2015, at 7:30 PM at Room 124 at the Norfolk Town Hall. One Liberty Lane, Norfolk, Mass. for special permit application to allow an off-permise sign for Cody Pet Hospital at 250 Dedham Street by Catherine S. Pillsbury. The site is located in the Commercial One zoning district. Reference Assessor's Map 18, Block 69, Lot 28. Application materials are available for public inspection in the office of the Norfolk Planning Board during regular hours of 9 to 6 PM Monday through Thursday.
Are you here for that? Do you have anything to present to us?
Yeah.
Okay.
So, all I'm really doing is...
Just tell us who you are.
Kate Pillsbury, Cody Pet Hospital. I started the animal hospital 18 years ago. It used to be called Whispering Pines Animal Hospital. And I had the permit to have a sign at 252 Dedham Street. Leo Comlin kindly allowed me to put my sign there. And it's been really helpful because people can actually find me. Sharon Avenue has, still has houses on it. A lot of people don't know it's a commercial road. And it's always been really helpful having a sign. And when Leo Comlin sold his property to the people of putting up the gas station, they took down my sign. I still have a permit with the state. My permit with the state doesn't expire until December of 2015. And what I'm trying to do is take the very sign and move it across from 252 Dedham Street to 250. And I'm going to put it exactly where there is a sign. This is the existing sign. It says Robin's Flowers. And Robin has moved to Florida. Her dollar business is out of business.
So yours would go in place of that?
Go exactly there. The people that...
It's the other side of Sharon.
It is. It's the corner where the bait shop is. The people that own that property are the Cataldos, and I have permission from the Cataldos to put my sign there.
And what happens with your existing sign comes down, or does somebody else?
It's already down.
Oh, so it comes down?
Yeah, so people can't find me right now. I've had a few people drive around and around.
What size is your new sign, Catherine?
This size is, I believe, 34 square feet. It's big.
Is that going to fit in the same area as the sign that's coming down for their flower shop?
Nothing's coming down. My facade's going to go on top of that.
It's going to be on top of it?
Yeah.
Is that the same size compared to that sign?
Is it going to go over the same frame?
Yeah.
You're covering it, that's what I was asking.
Exactly.
Okay.
That's exactly what we're trying to say.
So it's about the similar in size to the one that's there?
Exactly.
Is it similar in, is it similar in size to the one that was taken down?
No.
No?
It's bigger.
It's bigger?
It's bigger. That's a sign in front of my building, just so you know what the general...
It's going to be the same design?
Just curious if the board has received anything from the property owner or from you which contains information that the property owner consents to work with your proposals?
Yep. I've got it right here.
24 with a special permit.
Oh, there it is. Okay. Right there. We need a motion?
Do we have any other questions?
She's, she's requested waive fees.
Yeah, she is requesting.
Now, are we, are we voting on both the location and the size?
I believe so. Do we need a second motion to...
Second motion on the fee waiver, too.
And we have to cover advertising.
Right.
It's the minimum.
So the 750 application, does that include the advertising, or is that separate from the advertising?
That's separate. The advertising is about $150.
And that's paid?
The advertising. She hasn't paid for the advertising yet.
I have no problem waiving the fee, or it's just a relocation of the sign.
I don't either. I think that makes sense. You want to...
Does it need to go before Design Review Board for the design of it?
It's an existing sign, isn't it?
No, she's changing the...
It's going to match, from what I'm hearing.
Well, yeah, but it...
You say the sign in front of her building.
The size is the same, but the sign has got a different detail on it, correct?
No, this is pretty much...
That's exactly the sign that you have now?
Let me show you. I don't have a sign now. They took it down.
Yeah, but the one that was taken down, what did that look like?
Looked like that.
Looked like this, huh? Okay. Cody Pet Hospital. So it's a different, a different setup. So is that essentially what you're going to put up there? Or are you going to put that one up there?
I'm going to put up that one.
Well, this is my logo.
Yeah.
So, I mean, I'm hiring a sign guy to put it. It's not going to be curved at the top. It's going to be rectangular.
Which, which this one was. Rectangular, essentially. It's got that little hump on it, but maybe that's, maybe that's the sign on the other side. I'm not sure.
But we should be voting on the setup of the sign.
Yeah, yeah. So, so if we were agreeable to the location, the size, but would like to see the actual design before the final... Because we want to make sure...
So this is the thing. I'm laughing because my sign guy said that he wanted me to pay him ahead. And I said, "Well, I probably should get permission because how, why should I pay you to do all your work?" And then the town says, "No."
Just a sketch.
So you're saying...
Just a sketch.
Well, we're saying we would approve the location, we approve the size, we waive the fee, but we just, we want input before he builds the sign. He has to give you a drawing to approve. We'd like to see that drawing from a design perspective, just so that...
He wants like, he wants like a lot of money for that design.
Well, I don't, I think what you're hearing is unless there's something very wrong with what you present...
We're not going to say no to the sign. We might just say, "Use a smaller font," or, you know, I mean, it would be something really minor that you would just, you would make an adjustment on his design before he prints the sign.
Can't he do a pencil sketch just on a piece of paper showing what the sign is going to look like on a regular eight and a half by 11 piece of paper?
Yeah, but I, why does this not satisfy? Because this, I mean, it's a logo, it's reproducible, it's, that's pretty much...
Fundamentally, we agree with what you want to do, but we want to see the final time. Not premises signs, sorry.
So I, another meeting?
You could even, you know, get it to Betsy, and she could email it to me, give it to us at our next meeting.
Are you saying, Catherine, that that's exactly how the sign's going to look? The picture there?
Exactly. No change.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's a, it's a logo, and it's, it's on all our business cards. It's, yeah.
I'm sure it's not going to be anything significant whatsoever, just to sort of complete the process. We just need to put our eyes on it before it actually gets built in place.
Signs can be very controversial, you know.
Traffic, wayfinding, yeah.
Different types of things. So we just have to make sure that we have what the final design is, that we vote on as a permanent record, so that in the future, if there's problems, that you'll protect.
I mean, I suppose just mean that they would have to come back.
As much as they seem like Bird would actually protect you in the future, so that somebody can't say, "You're going to take your sign."
Okay.
Yeah, so I guess it's probably okay.
Considering this is still the Pondville area, the last Pondville sign, we had discussions over a small cloud in the upper right-hand corner of that sign by, by a butters.
We can still make the motion depending on the...
You can close the hearing.
Would you do it first before we make a...
Yeah. You can close it.
Yeah, you can close the hearing and then...
Close the hearing for the decision.
Yes.
Close is subject to getting the design information.
Sir?
I'm sorry. That was, she asked about closing the hearing, but you can, you can close it, subject to receiving that additional information. Yeah.
Okay. So that's the first motion.
So I'll, I'll make the motion to close the public hearing for the signage special permit for the Cody Pet Hospital. Relocation from 242 Dedham Street to 250 Dedham Street, subject to receipt of acceptable design.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I move to waive the $750 application fee for the relocation of the Cody Pet Hospital sign from 242 to 250 Dedham Street.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Can I just make an addition that's subject to her paying the advertising cost?
Indeed, that is what I said.
And do we want to move on our decision?
I think we should. We can approve this based on the design review approval.
Why don't you make that one? Go ahead.
Motion to approve the request for the sign from Cody Pet Shop, subject to design review approval, which will come along with the submission of a sketch of the sign.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
I think once we start the view of the design review, then we start to open up...
Especially in that neighborhood.
Is that what I was thinking?
Yeah.
Okay, so we are going to continue the hearing for Lake Streak, Lake Street Scenic Road 3 removal. Bob, did Steve meet with you last week, one-on-one, outside of the time that we walked Lake Street?
No.
Okay. He had mentioned we met twice since our last meeting as, as a committee, but, as a group, but he was mentioning maybe reaching out to you individually, but I don't think he got around to it, so...
No. I had a chance to talk to John. Did you know that there was a deal to... If there were any issues...
It was just a small section when we were walking Lake Street that some, some of the signs had been removed, but upon our review when we walked the full stretch, it was confusing to us because it looked like they should be removed. And we couldn't quite remember the history or if we were all on the same page as to whether those should have been removed or not.
Yeah, we missed your, your input in terms of where you were going to locate the street.
Yeah, so there was one small section.
I have a mark on a drawing that I have with me.
Yeah, so there was one small section I think we still had in question. But generally speaking, we walked the entire street and walked with you once and then continued another walk on our own, where we tried to mark, but we ran out of paint, sort of.
Did you go back and hit those?
I didn't.
Okay.
I mean, as Michelle has, has said, I think we have broad agreement. There are some questions in the area. I think it's number 32, correct?
Was it 32 or 42?
32.
I think it's 32. So that is where we had hoped that Steve himself would be able to connect and have some discussions because he was going to carry the message of the larger board to you and review that, as my recollections.
Was that in front of the, the home of that gentleman that...
It was near that, but we...
Straight away there.
There were some, the ones that were in front of him were clearly still marked, but there were some others near there that were not marked, that we felt should be. And that was another thing that came up during our site visit was there's one home, and I think it's, it's probably the home that's losing the most amount of trees in front of it. And it's around the 32.
That's 32.
And we had talked to the homeowner, I don't know if he's here tonight, while we were out on site, and that that would really be an area that we'd want to focus on potential some tree replacement, because it really does change the character and exposure of his property. We thought the most significantly along the street. And he mentioned he'd come here tonight, but we also mentioned that we would send you to talk to him with our approved street tree species that he could be, you know, thinking about and talking about with you as terms of replacement trees.
This replacement tree on his property, it'll be right away?
Well, we, we believe the ones you're removing are in the right of way. That was our assumption, was that you marked them because they were on the right of way. He does have a few trees, you know, I think that'd be something to work out with between you and him as to how you could kind of fill in and give him a little bit more buffer back after once those are removed. I think he seemed flexible about the details. He just wanted to understand that there might be some kind of commitment that we're looking at, some kind of tree replacement.
Having, you know, come up to the meeting, we'd like to get started right away. I had mentioned before that I don't know if you think of...
You should, actually. Sorry. We are.
Well, I'd like to take advantage of some off-season rates, and it's kind of daylight struck with TreeTech and also the excavator contractor, because they're just slow right now.
Yeah.
So I was wondering, is it possible, maybe I could meet up with Steve this week? I mean, he's not here, or Jeff, if you're familiar with it, we could just take it, get it right.
If it's agreeable to the board, I'd be happy to, myself, because we were, all of us were there, so anyone of us...
Sure.
The other thing I thought we had as a next step, too, was Conservation Commission, particularly in the wetland area. Wasn't there some, some question about things that would need to be reviewed by ConCon?
They have a filing for everything that's in the resource area, but he could still get started with a lot of...
On other areas, yeah. Well, we still have the hearing. If everyone's ready, we can open to the, the public, unless anybody has any other feedback based on our walk through. Okay, so we can open it to the public if anybody's here with any questions or comments about Lake Street. I know that we met with you on site, and so I think...
Yeah, so, so day one, we started at Medway, and we worked our way in. And I see McCormick's here. Thank you for coming. So I think we had agreement. Then you come to the bridge, which is, I think, where we had stopped that day one. That was where we ended for the day. And then more recently, we started at the other end and worked our way towards the bridge. So it's really that approach to the bridge, where number 32, I think, gets the beginning of some questions in terms of the right of way and replacement of trees and this type of thing, as you approach the bridge from that direction. So, just to put it in perspective, so it's, it's not the whole road.
It's about a 300-foot section, Bob, that basically, as you look at the right of way and the line of the street proposed, the only reason you'd be taking down these trees if it was root interference or it was going to interfere with the grading. So we can show you that spot, and you can let us know why they were marked, even though they're, they're not in the line of the roadway. Okay?
So nothing from public? So we could vote to close the hearing then?
Just before, we just want a little mention.
I met today with, with Ensta, who shortly will change their name. They've been bought out.
Oh, really?
If you didn't know that.
I didn't know that.
They have a vegetation program where they go through with their lines and take down trees, or trim trees according to their specifications. And they may be seen on Lake Street, which would have nothing to do with this process. So they're, I know that they're going down there. There's some electrical lines that they had...
They're doing their trimming anyway, just coincidentally?
Right. So everybody knows that's not part of what we're doing here. It's a different tree company, and, so if they're out there for some reason tomorrow, it's their business they're out there on.
You're the one who's going to be getting the phone calls when they come in, so...
Well, how many poles do you need to relocate, or have them relocate?
I haven't looked at that yet. To relocate poles is kind of like, we'd be lucky to get it done next year.
I understand, but I mean, when we walked down, there was at least, at least one that area.
At least one.
Maybe more than have to be moved.
There's a, there's a process where we can, poles can get slid back. So what they do is, the truck holds it, they dig behind it, and they kind of just, and they back up.
Sure.
To relocate a pole and to get all the utilities in cooperation with one another, that's, that's a year, maybe two even.
How are you going to handle the drainage with the runoff from Medway Street? You're going to have an engineer do a review of that and see where basins can be put?
Yes, I am.
Okay. So that's Mr. McCormick. You might be interested in this plan when it's done with the runoff coming from Medway Street and the...
We'll see that plan.
Yeah, the natural swells are going to be there to stop everything from going into the pond?
Right.
So that's going to be done by a PE?
I haven't hired anybody. Right now, I'm, I'm working with the gentleman that's in the audience right now from United Consultants, who's working with us through the NOI.
He's an engineer. We just want to make sure someone that's, that's trained in drainage designs this, and, yeah.
That'd be me.
You're trained, but...
We want to spend money and throw money at something that, that's unnecessary. I'll...
Well, you shouldn't say that, because the runoff into that pond is one of the biggest problems on that whole street.
Right.
So the runoff coming from Medway Street to be stopped before the pond is essential, essential. So in respect to everybody in my board, other boards, excuse me, that's going to be done, it's going to be done right, and it has to work. So it's not an afterthought. To me, it's one of the main things we're doing there.
Okay.
We wouldn't have such a low attendance from the butters here. So I think you better come up with a plan on who's going to design that, take the runoff and make sure it works, and then you show the planning board a copy of the design, and we can take a look at it and maybe have our consultant engineer look at it, too. Okay?
Very good.
John, how many critical areas do you think there are for focus in terms of the drainage?
Well, he's got, Medway Street runoff is by far the most. There's a long section that's coming down to the wetland, coming from the main street side, but the way he's got those trees cleared, there's, there's soft shoulders on either side of the road, which is a perfect spot for natural soil to conduct, to, to collect all of that runoff. And you can see the gravel that's pitted out from the runoff on the gravel part of the street. I think you marked some of those trees for this reason, Bob. So probably 300 feet before you get to the, the wetland area where the, the crossing is, you've got an area to dump all of that drainage off to the side and stop all of it from going into the wetland. To me, those are the two main spots that can be improved by this, this whole project.
I agree.
Okay.
I don't know if this is on, but just so we're clear, we had set forth a number of objections, or I had set forth a number of objections in my previous letter to the board, and we were, you know, just so we're clear, we're, we're standing on those as well. We're not waiving any of those.
Just to follow up on that, as I recall, our conversation as we walked the street together that Sunday, you seemed to be satisfied with the way we finally decided we were going to have to lay out the street. Is that right?
No.
No?
No, I mean, I think that was very nice and very informative, but, you know, I mean, that's what if we're going, we're going to do that? You know, I mean, we marked some trees, we saved some trees, and tried to work things out. I think Bob and I both talked that if, if it's, comes to that, we need to do a little land swap a couple feet here and there, we can work that out. That's not going to be the big deal, but so as to avoid any confusion, no, we're not in agreement. I'm not in agreement with the proposal as it is to widen or pave Lake Street.
Well, then we might as well make a suggestion that this be heard again in front of the selectmen, because this is a tree hearing. Am I correct? And another process will be the notice of intent with the Conservation Commission. So it adds concern, so it doesn't go into deaf ears. Should be heard in front of the selectmen.
Yeah.
So I think what we need to do is, is get on the agenda for a meeting with the selectmen, deal with the issues.
You mean to discuss the right-of-way issues and...
Yes.
Who owns what, et cetera?
Right.
Sounds like a good idea.
Just, just so it's not difficult to move forward with this project, if at least getting through the tree issue was something that I can, we can accomplish this winter, it would be, it's wonderful. So leaving this meeting, I just want to know that, just say, we never did pave the street. The trees and the shaping of the street, or the, or the drainage is something, well, the trees at least for this meeting, is something I can go forward with. We don't have to stop and start and stop and start, is...
Once, we will...
The tree hearing is the last stop, in other words.
This hearing is about you removing trees on a right-of-way. It's not our job to determine the legality of the right-of-way. That's for other parties to determine. Basically, if we close this and approve the hearing, you have our right to go take down the trees that you suggested. If somebody else, whether it be Mr. McCormick or somebody else, has questions about whose property is whose, then that goes to, like you said, the selectmen, which is why it's probably not a bad idea to discuss that with them and go over both sides and the reasons for that. And the conservation issue stands all by itself.
Right. I just want, I just wanted to be clear that, you know, when we take down a tree, we stump, I'm going to do a little grading at the same time. To a lot of people, that may signify putting in a superhighway. It's not exact, not all what I'm doing. The road is to go back where it is right now, and anything that I'm doing on the side that may look like I'm widening the road, if I'm widening the road, it's going to be like, you know, this much is what I'm talking about. But, but I haven't looked at that yet for the exact, if it's going to be a variable width, it's going to be 20 feet from beginning to end. So I just wanted to clear that we can take the trees, we can stump, and I can grade the area that we take the trees down. Resolve.
But you can't leave, you can't leave the open holes after you stump the trees.
No.
So you've got to grade it in.
But grading sometimes means the excavation of some materials and getting rid of unsuitable materials and working with the drainage right away while I have the piece of equipment there. It's not the final look of the street, but, you know, it's, it's some of the things that I'd like to get done this winter.
So there's a suggestion, too, that this issue has been spoken and agenda item at several Board of Selectmen meetings, and so rather than it becoming a new agenda item and raised again, that perhaps if there's confusions or questions, then Mr. McCormick can give a call to the Board of Selectmen and simply ask what the decision was made. I believe there's been a decision rendered.
Yeah, I would separate the decision as to whether the road should be paved from any question in terms of land swap, right-of-way, et cetera, which you may come across, you know, in terms of trying to negotiate the most acceptable outcome with the McCormicks and other folks who may be in a similar situation. So those are still legitimate interests, in my opinion, for Board of Selectmen, because land swap and such, they have to be. But in terms of the decision of whether the road should be paved, public hearings have taken place before the Board of Selectmen, the decision is made, I think that would confound this process unnecessarily at this point.
And just one last issue. Stone walls is an issue, and I hope I didn't miss, but it's also part of the design element. The stone walls that are there, if we roll them out of the way, that's just so that we can put them back, but at an elevation, and that would, that would be agreeable with the, with the drainage. Is there something I'm missing, and I'm asking this because I really don't, is there something I'm missing in the process? Because when we go down and we put the stone walls back, instead of them being up here, because some of them are perched up at a 1920 elevation, where the road is really down here. What I want to do is go back with the grade, take those rocks, put them down. They'll be there, and they'll also act as a bit of a retention, a retainer wall.
Well, I know that... Well, I know that...
Again, that may...
That came up, Mr. McCormick, that came up during the walk that Mr. McGee had made some comments that to do the work properly, and I'm not necessarily talking about the wall right in front of your house, that's a separate issue, but some of the other stone wall, I think there's another stone wall that Bob had said, Mr. McGee had said that he may need to shift the rocks to do the work and then can shift them back more or less in a similar position.
In kind, right.
Maybe a little different elevation, whatever. And I think we had agreement that that was acceptable, my recollection. Is that correct? Do you wanna speak to that?
Well, I'm not exactly sure what you're talking, what you're talking about, Mr. McCormick.
Well, where exactly you're talking about, what stone wall? I've got stone walls.
Here, your garage, if that...
Yeah, if that, if that's the one. Huh?
The ones that Steve had mentioned.
Yeah.
I'm afraid of driving by.
No, no, you're talking, the ones in the front are the ones that you're not gonna touch, right?
The significance and they're in place, no stones are going to be taken from that site. They're going to be rearranged exactly where they are. Instead of up here, they may be down here, but they will be there, they'll be the same stone. But it will require moving those stones temporarily so I can grade behind and then put them back.
So the question is, which stones? There are stones right in front of the house, which I think are the most, of most concern. But further down towards the bridge, is my recollection, there's other stones that you had made the comment, specific to those stones, or my recollection, that you may have to shift them just to do some work and then kinda shift them back. And that's what I'm talking about. Those are closer to the garage than to the home.
Yeah.
So if I've got it wrong, correct me, but that's my recollection.
You know, Josh might be right, but I could've been looking at it as an example while we were on the subject, saying, take those rocks, I'm gonna just move them out of the way and then put them back a little bit more orderly than they are right now. Not, I mean, I want to look to them with, you know, five, the loaded joints and talking about dry, filled stone walls back in place, the way the farmers in those days tended.
I think aside from that particular location though, we did not review, you know, stone walls in detail in terms of what might be moving, what might be going back.
It's not the scope of our hearing here.
Right.
As I recall, the conversation, they were stone walls or a stone wall that extended beyond his property, up the street a little bit. It wasn't necessarily only on his property, it was another stone wall.
As you're going towards the wetlands?
As you're going towards the wetlands.
And it's related because the idea is to cheat things in a certain direction to save trees on the other side. So they are, that's how they're related to this whole topic of which trees to remove. So they are related and that's how they become a planning board matter indirectly.
I just had one, I'm...
I'm sorry.
No, no, go ahead.
I just had one other question, you know, listening to Bob here. Like I say, I think we're all trying to work together professionally. Taking down some of the trees, I have a question. I don't think you can do that without Conservation Commission approval. I mean, a lot of these trees are going to be in wetlands.
You can't touch the trees in the buffer zone.
Okay, that clarifies things, thank you.
You're welcome.
We're talking about the trees outside of the wetlands. And then when we do the NOI, you know, our consultant is here, but, um...
Basically, we're giving you the rights to take down the trees and you're gonna go develop a roadway that in theory is owned by the selectmen and they can do what they want. If there's a property rights claim as you're starting to move forward, then that'll take its course. Hopefully, if there's an issue, that can be worked out before there happens to be a, you know, some type of a claim in court. But basically, we're just giving you the permission to take down the trees.
Speaking for myself and I think for the other members of the board, but they can correct me if I'm wrong, your request tonight, your request tonight is to walk out of here with our approval to start taking down those trees. And I think we all agree, with the exception of that stretch on the left-hand side as you're heading towards Main Street, going up the hill from the wetland, maybe 300 feet, something like that, that needs to be reviewed one more time with you and us or Steve or one of the board members, anyway. Other than that, I think we're all in agreement that you can go ahead.
Mm-hmm.
Very good.
So if there aren't any more public comments, we're gonna close the public hearing? All right, motion please.
Motion to close the public hearing for Lake Street Scenic Road.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And do we wanna make that motion basically what you just claimed?
I've moved to authorize the head of the DVW to begin to, to complete the tree removal on Lake Street for the marked trees, with the exception of a 300-foot stretch on the left-hand side heading towards Main Street that needs to be reviewed one further time between Mr. McGee and a representative from the planning board.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Thanks, Bob.
Thanks, Bob.
So if one of your two new folks looks at the section and feels that it's okay, then he doesn't have to come back to say, he can just go forward, right?
Yeah.
Can you share responsibility on whoever wants to go there with him?
Sure. Hopefully, Steve will be recovered if he can do it, because he wanted to do it, so...
He wanted to do it because he had time off from work. I don't know, now that he's back from work, if he'll be able to do it.
Well, give him the, give him the option.
Yeah, yeah.
Whatever you, whatever you, whatever the cheer.
Whoever's available. Whoever's available. All right, are we ready for Winding Hollow?
Yeah, I guess so.
Okay, Winding Hollow, Holbrook Street. We're gonna continue the preliminary subdivision review, open space, special permit hearing. Since our last meeting, we also visited the site. Thank you for meeting us out there.
Thank you for meeting us.
And we got to meet your son, Tom. And we walked Holbrook and we talked about the sidewalk. We walked to the back of the site, we talked about hiking trails.
We looked down the precipice there.
Ran up and down the hill a few times.
Mm, yeah.
Got his workout in.
I was with him and then he made the trek up through here. I didn't make that one. I came up the street to look at the sidewalk.
Yeah.
So, yeah, I think it was a good walk. I hope the board members got a feel for the property and what the proposal consists of on the ground as opposed to just looking at the design plans. And based on that site walk, the discussions that we have, we, in the previous hearing that we had, we have made a few changes that I'd like to point out. We did extend the sidewalk to the driveway at the cul-de-sac as we had discussed. We've also proposed the sidewalk, which comes down and terminates with a ramp, just about where the catch basin location is on Holbrook Street with that small stone retaining wall that we had walked down here. We've shown and had shown previously sidewalk in that direction there.
So you're skirting the trees there, right, so we can preserve some of the older tree?
Through this side?
Actually going in that direct, yeah, right there on the right. Isn't that, that's...
Between Holbrook Street and the cul-de-sac, right? Is that where you're referring?
I'm sorry, yeah, yeah, yeah. Wasn't there a couple trees that were gonna be on the backside?
But so, I think that was over here. Over here, yeah.
That was in there, yeah.
In the open space part.
Yep. Pond View's over here.
Okay, correct.
Yeah, most of the members had parked down in that area there and we kinda walked down there, yeah.
They were there.
So where are you talking about ending the sidewalk? What do you think seemed legal at that catch basin?
At that catch basin. Yep. Yeah, that's what we had talked about and that's what we've shown now is for that to come to there. We've basically just shown the sidewalk here in a general location that mimics the right-of-way. Obviously, we're gonna need to, you know, look at some of the concerns that were brought up with respect to grading site distance and the trees that are there.
Why don't you, why don't you put in your plan a meandering sidewalk and then when you come before us, you can just mark the trees that are big enough to go stay?
Yes, I mean, that's, we need to go with the next step.
Yeah.
Presuming that we receive an approval, a special permit approval for the open space. So we'll address that at that time. I think that would be more appropriate. So, and then the last change, um, which is on Sheet Two. Do the board members have plan copies?
I don't think so.
Some 11 by 17?
Sure.
Soon as I find them, I know I got them.
Hey, so we need to follow along. Tough to read.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Much better, Rick. One of the concerns from the previous hearing was with respect to the corner lots, Lot One and Lot Nine. So what we did was we pulled this lot line back here, extended the open space basically around here so that lot would not have frontage on Holbrook Street. And we basically put a parallel line in the same area here to sever the frontage of Lot One and Lot Nine from Holbrook Street.
So their frontage is on the new cul-de-sac?
So the frontage is on the new cul-de-sac, which then necessitated the waiver request for nine lots, where only seven are allowed on that, on a dead-end cul-de-sac roadway. So those are really the things that came about from the last hearing and the site walk. We do have a review comment letter from PSC. Happy to go through their comments. Board would prefer.
And are these comments based on the new layout you've shown us?
They are based on the plans of the town received on the 30th.
It's on this one?
Yes.
He says no, he says yes.
Yeah, well, he...
No, I think he confirmed it, yeah.
December 15th. Have you had a chance to review this stuff yet?
Yes. Yeah, we received the comments today. I mean, with the holidays, it's, they didn't have much time. We appreciate them getting the comments out.
Walk us through the...
Sure.
...points of this?
Yeah. Basically, the first four comments discussed the open space preservation principles, the design principles. And basically, we agreed that, you know, the current configuration adhered more closely to these principles. So that sort of have listed our description of each and what okay's after those comments, one through four.
Yeah.
Comment five was the discussion that the corner lots, because they have frontage on Holbrook Street as well as the new roadway, would require a waiver from the underwriting lot area minimum of 55,000 square feet. And I don't know if the, uh, the open space, cutting off those lots from Holbrook Street, I mean, that may satisfy that requirement.
Question, are we allowed to waive zoning bylaw?
No.
Do you think that there was solution tonight? Gino helps with this condition?
I, I do, I do, but also I think it's, it raises an interesting question because it basically disallows any corner lots on an open space subdivision, on a cul-de-sac. I mean, I...
The way the existing bylaws.
Right, right. I know that we require driveway access to be from the frontage. I think it would have been possible to interpret it as if, as long as the driveways come off the, off the cul-de-sac road, that that's the frontage and the other has to meet the front setback, but it's not the frontage for access of the lot. But, but this certainly does eliminate that question entirely, so...
Would they, even in this configuration, would they still need the front setback off of Holbrook as well?
Only for that portion that butts Holbrook.
Which is essentially the entire length, isn't it?
No, not, well, not the one on the, on the right, because it's, it's got that little strip.
Yeah, but Lot Nine need to.
Right. But Lot, but Lot One has the strip.
Yeah.
Lot Nine would have to meet the setback from Holbrook, yeah.
Lot Nine has got a narrow strip as well, but it's very narrow.
Oh, oh, I'm not seeing...
Super narrow.
Super narrow.
Oh, okay.
Again, at the 11 by 17 scale, you really need to look at the magnification. It's a foot.
So it's really a sign... Basically offset at one foot.
So let's...
Is that technically...
Yeah. Yeah.
It's still tough to see, but you can see it a little more clearly here. We've offset this street line one foot back to create the open space traveling down one foot in width. And then here, we just made it a straight line as opposed to putting the curves in there. Basically solve that issue?
Yes.
I would describe it as crude but effective. Recommend that we do it.
So you could actually walk along here.
I like challenging.
It's creative.
Yeah, I think so. It does make sense.
Like a maintenance driveway or something.
If they have to access the open space from, they have to walk sideways down that strip to get around the corner.
Is there a reason why it's so small? Could it be any bigger?
Could you maintain your lot size that you needed on Lot Nine and make it a little bigger so that someone could actually walk along the edge if they wanted?
Yeah, that's what I'm thinking.
And not be trespassing?
Right.
No, I mean, this, the sidewalk is within the right-of-way down this...
Yeah, that's true.
This area here, so... And with that slope that exists, I think it would be a challenge to walk in that portion of the open space. But to answer the question, yes, we could make the lot deeper and now we're, and it would still comply with the, I think, with the frontage requirements, area requirements, et cetera.
Yeah, after we talked, I guess it's not necessary, but this...
Yeah, the sidewalks there.
Our Item Six was sort of a multi-part thing where we addressed preliminary plan requirements. One required a narrative how the stormwater drainage would be addressed, and we didn't receive calculations or a narrative with the solution.
There are no, there were no drainage calculations completed. On Sheet Six, there's a narrative with respect to septic, stormwater and the traffic review, albeit a very...
Some notes, okay.
A short narrative.
Yeah, okay.
And you can certainly look at that if you'd like, but in essence, we're proposing a catch basin at the cul-de-sac into an infiltration basin here. There's a high point in the roadway roughly at this location here and two catch basins into another open infiltration basin located here. Obviously, as we go through the drainage calculations, we'll meet the requirements for post, pre versus post development rate, volume of runoff and water quality, et cetera.
Um, Six C was a discussion of site distances, which are vastly improved, I think, from the former design.
Yeah, we've actually had discussions. Mr. Houston has had numerous comments with regard to site distance. We are proposing some grading in here so we can accomplish 340 feet of stopping and intersection site distance. We've just gotta label that as site distance, but that's certainly the intent is to provide adequate site distance.
Uh, there's been a requested waiver from the vertical datum from NGV 29, which is the town standard, to an AD 88.
And if I may, the reason for that is the new flood maps are based on the 88 datum. So to be looking at anything that would have a flood zone associated with it, it's more appropriate now to be looking at the 88 datum.
Six E is just a content requirement that the soils types, based on NRCS, are shown on the drawings. I may have missed it.
It's on one sheet.
It is, okay.
And the layout was turned off on the other one.
All right.
But if you look at Sheet Four, um, you can get a feel for it. And basically, the development area is, I believe, a hinkley. Loomy sand and a sandy loom split on the property. We have conducted, we have it here, there's a split here. Hinkley loomy sand is located to the north. Hinkley loomy sand to the north and hinkley sandy loom to the south. And that soil line then travels down basically through the lots to the left-hand side of the roadway.
Permeable soils, okay.
Very permeable soils. We've conducted, I believe, 18 test pits out there and everything was less than two minutes an inch. We were 12 to 16 feet in depth and no groundwater was encountered.
And then Comment Seven, we sort of maybe got ahead of ourselves, but went through the definitive requirements, basically because of waivers had been asked from some, so we just sort of went through what would be required on the definitive plan. I guess we can look at just a small handful where the waivers are requested.
The waivers, yeah.
So Seven G would be the first where they requested some of the contents requirements be waived from the cross-sections.
Yes, and... Yes, and again, we have staked out the roadway and had the site walk with the board members to look at the trees, as we had requested a waiver to not have to show all the trees within the cross-sections and complete an existing tree plan. And the reason I thought we had that site walk was to look to see if there were any trees that would be worth saving within the proposed roadway. And I think most of the trees were pines.
That was my recollection. I don't recall.
Is there much grading needed for that road or off the right-of-way, 20, 30 feet?
No. You can see the grading here. I mean, you've got some contours that are extending in as the lot development will...
And the set bits are all going in the front?
They vary, you know, back, back, front, back, back, side.
What I'd personally like to see, because that's such a beautiful area, I would like to see you go air mock some of the big trees that are worth saving, whether they be in the right-of-way or in the front yards, which is 20, 30 feet off the right-of-way, just so you're not going down there, and the front yards are all cleared, and the right-of-way's cleared, and, you know...
That's some really beautiful trees.
For 80, 90 feet back, you've just got open space. I'd like to see you go through right-of-way, 20 feet back, and take the trees that are worth saving and mock them and put them on the plan.
Okay.
We drive down there, then we'll see them whether they're on the right-of-way or on private property, because if you leave them on private property, I don't think anybody's going to spend the money to take down a tree after they're moving into the house. So why don't we come up with something that schematically looks aesthetically pleasing from, and I know that a couple of our members that are here would probably appreciate that too. So I have no problem about mocking every tree in the right-of-way, but I would like to see you use your discretion and just tag some of the ones that are worth saving, okay?
Yeah, I don't think we walked carefully enough, knowing, you know, we roughly knew where the road was going, and we did notice some beautiful...
So basically, 50 feet on either side of your center line?
Yep.
You've got 30 feet for the right-of-way and 20 more for the front yard. 50 feet on either side of that center line, once you go through, will mark down trees that you're able to keep as far as the aesthetics go in it, okay?
Okay.
All right.
As marking the trees, would it be just like hardwoods and things, or are there certain, you know, sometimes the pines when you start clearing the workup, even if it's...
Excuse me, even if it's 20 or 30 feet around them?
I'd use your discretion on that.
Okay.
I mean, if you don't have enough hardwoods, then you've got to save some pines, and I would suggest save the pines.
I mean, even myself, I'd like, I'd really like to save the hardwoods. They can look really nice and pretty and stuff with a different foliage.
Play it by ear and mock the ones you're going to save, and we'll take a look at them, okay? That'd be great.
That sounds good.
Pretty great.
Thank you.
Okay, seven J, there was a request to waive the traffic impact analysis, which is a fairly detailed requirement. Because it's only a nine-lot project, and it might be appropriate to waive it.
And as part of that, we would be providing site distance profiles for the intersection calculations, et cetera, which Mr. Houston has requested.
A partial waiver, as discussed, will be required for the sidewalks along the frontage on, I guess, the westerly portion of Holbrook Street. And I guess also, there's a waiver request to eliminate the footpaths into the open space. Is that another?
Yes.
Okay. Seven P, there was a waiver to request both reduction in the right-of-way width and the pavement widths that are required for a secondary street. The 60-foot right-of-way is required, and there's a request to reduce to 50-foot. And the pavement is required to be 26 feet, and there's a request to reduce that to 24.
What's the reason for the right-of-way waiver?
The right-of-way width waiver is just, you know, to minimize having to widen this and push the things back increases the open space area, reduces the, you know, amount of disturbance within the roadway. I mean, in essence, we're able to fit either a 24 or 26-foot paved roadway within a 50-foot right-of-way. We could...
Did you have that answer anticipated?
What's that?
Did you have that answer anticipated?
No.
Good job.
That was off the top of my head.
There's required waiver for cul-de-sacks serving more than seven lots. There are nine in this project. Seven Q, seven V is a waiver requested to allow stormwater basins less than 25 feet from a lot line, the proposed 10 feet, less than 100 feet from a front setback line. 20 feet is proposed, and less than 70 feet from a basement, or less than 100 feet from a basin, 70 is proposed.
Where are the basins going to be, Rick?
There'll be one, we're proposing one basin here and one basin here, and...
You know about the tree bylaw, right?
The tree bylaw?
Yeah. You can't take down the trees on the right-of-way from the back of the house, side and rear setbacks.
Yes, oh, yes, yes, Tom.
So are those basins being that close to the lot line going to affect that?
There is some grading proposed here, but I believe that bylaw allows for tree removal as part of an approved subdivision plan, so...
Yeah, but it's the one half a dozen of the other. If we, if we don't waive the basins being that close to the lot line, then you're going to have the tree buffer.
Hmm.
So if we waive that, then you're saying you can take down the tree buffer. So I just want to make sure you keep the setbacks in place. Can you move the basins up so you're keeping that 25-foot setback in the back?
Again, yes, we can certainly look at that. We appreciate the comment. We obviously, as we move forward, we obviously will need to go out and do some testing to properly size the basins, and they may adjust, but...
Just keep it in mind, that's all.
Yeah, no, it's a good point. Thank you.
You're welcome.
The basins are fenced, right? We're going to provide the screening, the evergreen screening is required around the basins? No fencing. We don't require fencing. All right. Not required.
Just to circle back, I just want to make sure I understand, John. Was your concern that because they're going to be so close potentially to the property line, that that 10 feet might result in trees being removed that actually extend into the 25-foot setback?
Yeah, that was, but, yeah, but it's not, it's not a major concern, because when you look at the back lot line, you've got this upgrade of the open space, which is solid trees, so it's not like, it's not like if it doesn't work, it's a big deal. Because if both of the basins are on this side, you know, it becomes way less relevant than if they were on the other side in a cleared space, that's all.
Technically, a second waiver would be required to remove sidewalk from one side of the roadway. That's seven W. Seven Y, there's a request to not provide street lighting, I guess either at the end of the cul-de-sac or at Holbrook Street. So that is, those are definitive requirements, and there's a bunch of others that I guess we'll look at once the second set comes in. Proposed ownership of the permanent open space should be provided.
Yes, we'll certainly work with the town on that.
That's our number eight.
Ray, did you have a comment on the street light last time?
Yeah, I mentioned it might be a good idea to have a street light at the intersection with Holbrook Street.
Is there one at Pond View, the intersection Pond View and Holbrook, a street light?
I looked where the light is. It's, if you come out the cul-de-sack heading towards Pond View, it's on the right, it's offset a bit, but not too far from where that cul-de-sack is cut.
The existing street light in the...
The existing street light, if that's what the question was. It's not far from where this cul-de-sack is.
It's on Holbrook, though.
But it's on Holbrook. It's on the opposite side of Holbrook.
So which side, the cul-de-sack side or the opposite side?
Opposite side. It's not too far from where the intersection is going to be.
There's a utility pull right here, just to the east of that driveway. That's the one it was in?
That's it.
Yeah. Very nice, Mr. Pullmore, I appreciate that.
Well, I remembered to look. I almost forgot.
The site context plan is required, and I guess not at the preliminary stage, but which can depict potential linkage from this open space plan to other offsite resources. Typically, a concept plan is developed by registered landscape architects, and there's been a request not to acquire an RLA for the project. And that's item 10, which is final.
Any questions?
Uh, no.
A comment. So with the waiver on the lighting, there was some conversation, and Mr. McGee, he had participated at the last meeting. I just want to make sure that in the decision or somewhere it's captured that the plan is to put these, the lighting, on private property, basically, for the homeowners to maintain and such. I think that's the spirit of there being no lighting on the cul-de-sack itself, right? So that should be captured somewhere. I'm not sure it is anywhere here. But Gino and Ray, I think it's important that we capture that.
What about putting it on Holbrook Street with that site distance issue? Street light?
I don't know that there's an issue that requires anything beyond what would exist there. There is a street light not far from the intersection. I'm just one person, I just...
No, that's what I'm asking. Does that light up the new street well enough?
Well, the intersection, I would think that there would be sufficient lighting right at the, but it's not going to perhaps, depending on what we do with trees and such, I'm not sure it's going to really do anything up into the cul-de-sack.
That's going to be a shame, but this is such a bad site distance issue, that's...
Maybe you could report on the foot candles that it produces and the range we could determine based on the actual, actual calculation of it. Easy enough to read. Would we even be talking on the waivers where this is preliminary? I mean, I know you included them in the preliminary decision, but would we want to incorporate them at this point, or would we wait?
I think, I think it's fair to at least comment on them, just so that the folks don't develop something and then have us be dead-set against it. That's my own personal thought. The street light or something can be added after the fact, but if you don't, if somebody's against waiving the right-of-way width or the street width or something like that, that really creates an engineering extra cost that's kind of substantial, and not that we have to, but I know with the boards then in the past as far as waivers, I know we don't vote them until the end, do we?
Right.
Right. But we can give them an idea of which...
Sure, sure, absolutely.
Where we stand.
That's one of the repurposes of a preliminary plan, is just to be fair about the whole thing.
I mean, it seems like the major issues are, not that there's anything that's insurmountable, they involve the drainage basins and the trees, right? Isn't that most of the questions that exist right now involve drainage basins and trees?
I think from my perspective, just from what I've heard of the Butters, might be traffic as well. I mean, I have a different personal opinion, but I think respecting what I've heard from the Butters have heard the concern about traffic because it's such a tough curve.
Even taking the driveways off Holbrook, there's still concerns with the nine homes...
I think that I, my personal opinion is, I think it would be negligible any impacts, but I'm just trying to respect the comments that I've heard.
Just as sort of a catch-up question, the requirement is for sidewalks typically on both sides of a new street cul-de-sac. And here, it's one, although there is one being put down from Holbrook Street down to the cul-de-sac, does the board, how does the board feel about that? I mean, is that adequate for sort of compensation for that? Sometimes, as I recall, the board has asked for a contribution of the sidewalk fund because it's only on one side.
Yeah, I know that well.
Yeah.
That's, that's, that's normally what's done, but...
But this is adequate because we're going from Holbrook Street, yeah?
Yes.
Okay, fine.
Yeah, I'm fine with it.
I also think, as I had talked to a couple of other members in the site walk, after puffing and puffing up that hill in the open space, I don't see any real need to go carve out a formal pathway and take down trees and do any scrubbing, because I think that people using the open space would just walk that naturally and just find their way through the woods rather than coming down and trying to take down and put a path down, a 50-foot incline with a two-to-one slope. So that was just my own thought on that.
I think we all agree on that, John. I think the question came up in terms of access, whether there's a swath between...
I would like to see, yeah. What I think would be nice on the open space, I think the open space is set up super. I'd like to see some, just some trail markers, just to let people know, two reasons, let people know where the open space is to access from Holbrook. And secondly, it would tend to stop the neighbors from encroaching, making the backyards bigger. So if just off of Holbrook Street you had some trail markers going down just to show the open space, then everybody would know that's available for the town and stop these folks and these folks from, you know, increasing their backyards to make it disappear.
Well, let me ask a question. When we did the site walk, my recollection was from Holbrook, the access to the open space on the side furthest from Pond View, the access was not really very manageable in terms of elevation, at least the portion of it that's on this property. And then you have the fish and game property, okay, which is a separate, separate private property. So we had some conversation about having access from this cul-de-sack into the open space, which I think I see here, and maybe you could talk to it. And the idea was that if someone were to use that, that access point, that they wouldn't have to contend with any steep elevations. But I agree, John, there wouldn't be any need to be removing significant number of trees, doing anything in proximity to the wetlands. There would be no need for it, but it'd be dead-ended. In other words, they'd go to a certain point and stop and walk back.
You could find your own way through the woods without taking down trees. You could find your own way, right, Rick?
They wouldn't necessarily circle, they wouldn't necessarily go all the way out to Holbrook if they had access there because of the elevations and the issues.
And we've provided approximately 92 feet of frontage on the right-of-way into the open space. And what we've talked about is, that basically falls right here, and what we've talked about is maybe something in here when we're looking at the basin to provide...
Gravel or something.
Something clearly marked, we're already going to be removing trees for grading for the basin and come in there from the sidewalk in to prevent, you know, trespass on the lot and demarcate the open space. So, yeah, that's a good idea, and we can certainly look at that. Would that carry around to the other side, to the open space on the other side? To over here? Yeah. I think, you know, over in here, I've had the opportunity to walk that, and I agree with Mr. Weddleton. It's similar to what we walked back here in that you can really find your way between the pine trees. Yeah, okay.
But are you asking if you parked over by the basin, can you, can you walk and navigate and connect over?
Based on the contours there, probably, in a practical, to make a, make a path to catch both... Back here?
Yeah. It almost seems to be, it could, is there a logical spot? I know we're doing the meandering sidewalk in that portion of open space off Holbrook, but is there a spot off of Holbrook you could pull in?
Off of Holbrook?
Yep. Where your meandering path is.
You mean for parking or for access?
Access, parking.
Both, actually. I mean, certainly there's potential for pedestrian access off of Holbrook Street from the sidewalk, you know, in...
Yeah. I would leave it at that.
To park on Pond.
Pond, yeah, Pond View. My personal opinion, I would just leave it at that. I'm not sure how many people are really going to use that. I mean, it's, it's...
That's the nicest area to walk, though.
I mean, it's, but it's a pretty short trail. I mean, it's going to be dead-headed just because of the elevations. You're not going to be able to circle back. You're just going to go in there, it's dead-headed, and walk out. I mean, I'm not sure how many people are really going to be looking at that as a destination site to park.
At least like it marked so people can see that it's town open space.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And it's surrounded by private property. There are no connections to an existing open space or a park or anything of that nature. Is there, is there any open space of public property between the two halves, or does that, do those lots actually come right to the, to the next private property? I can't tell from... So you've got a match line here, but is there, is there a way to get around there without stepping on private property, around the corner? Oh, certainly. If you look at the point here at the match line, and then I flip the page here, that's the point here. So the open space is quite large to the rear.
It's just that you're walking like this.
Well, if you meander down the path and then it flattened out, and somewhere in here is where we came down to, where it dropped off to the isolated wetland. You recall, Jeff?
It's an angle, you have to...
You could certainly walk down in that area, and then you'd have to traverse the hill to get back, to get back up, but...
Could you make it any easier? Maybe bring that point further, let's say, south?
This point?
Yeah. Bring it further south so it's a little bit flatter to make that corner and maybe just extend that lot line out the other way going that back lot line, I should say.
Cutting this off, you mean?
Yeah, bring that, bring that point down.
Actually, it's a good idea.
And just sort of, and now.
And then kick out to the right under lot five.
Yeah. Yeah. You mean square it off, something like that?
Yeah, just kick it out and have it match into the lot fall line.
Trying to just do, just to avoid, so you could just be on the edge before you drop it in elevation.
Right. You just pick up that.
Can look at that, you're sure?
That's a good idea.
Who's the reason for the point?
Yeah, you're almost there.
Don't keep a lot to the edge.
What's that? Who's the reason for the point?
Uh, just as we were coming around developing the lots.
For tall.
Trying to keep everything.
So none else could walk it.
No, no, trying to keep everything out of the buffer zone and the, and the 200-foot setback to the, to the, to the wetlands for a structure for the open space provisions.
All right. I'm going to open to the public. This is for the Winding Hollow, 38 Holbrook Street. Anybody here?
While we're on open space, I just had one, something to throw out there a little bit. I, I do own the land on the adjacent side of Holbrook Street. Obviously, we talked about that during this whole hearing process. Would there be any consideration, maybe if we combine that property with this open space and put it all together so that you had it on both sides of Holbrook Street coming in?
You're going to donate it?
Exactly, yes.
It's a good tax write-off.
Mm-hmm.
What's the downside?
I think the conservation may.
You know, something like that. Mm-hmm. I, I just, just wanted to put out there for consideration right now as we could talk about it later on, but.
Can we, Gino, in terms of, does it have to be contiguous for us to take that action as a board relevant, relevant to a project like this?
Well, it, it sounds like he's willing to donate it. It could be a separate donation with not, he already has enough open space here unless he wanted to do it as kind of maybe, I don't know, to enhance it. Is it going to have a, a name, open space, Winding Hollow, open space area includes across the street? But, but we, the bylaw already allows area across the street to be included anyway.
Okay.
Does it matter who you donate it to, whether it would be part of this project or directly to the town?
I would leave that up to the basis of the planning board or conservation, who they'd want to have it donated to. I could either incorporate it with a conservation restriction with this open space to the homeowners or we could contribute the whole thing to the town, whatever the, the board and the commission decides.
Okay. We take it.
All right, so open to any comments from the audience? Okay. All right, so do you want us to close this hearing on the preliminary? Yeah? Are we ready for that? Okay.
All right, so, in motion, I move to close the preliminary subdivision review and open space special permit hearing for Winding Hollow on Holbrook Street. Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, and we'll get back on the decision, right? Thank you.
Thank you.
You have a decision on that, Gino, don't you?
Hey, Rick.
You have a decision on the, on the.
Can I keep a copy?
Well, because it's also a special permit, it's not.
It's two.
Yeah, it can be combined.
Should we have closed the special permit hearing too?
He did.
So what we have?
Because I was waiting, I was going to, I was going to say that, but he already.
And ask.
Never mind. We don't talk. We don't talk.
I hear you.
I'm there, sorry. Thank you. I gotta stop taking that. Just move it by.
I forget to say.
This is my mind property is touches. I feel so good. Pampering something, right? I'm nervous.
That's why I.
Oh, yeah. I don't know. 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 I don't know.
My name is John Lawrie. I represent the P. T. F. on the McArthur Road, or McArthur Lot Hall, if possible. We decided at this time to, like you wrote the letter yesterday, to withdraw the application of the.
You think I got one?
Okay.
But we'd like the board, we'd like to come back and probably maybe in the late spring, early summer. That'll give us plenty of time to get representation from an attorney and actually time to take one. We'd like the board and the engineers for the board to consider the fees that were involved already and maybe give us some sort of relief when we do reapply. And it's up to you. We know what we're going to have to do, a butters list all over again and everything else, so, but that's what we would like to do.
Great.
Do you have a letter on file requesting a withdrawal?
Yes. Do we have to vote on that withdrawal? Shall we?
Without prejudice, they.
Yep.
Yeah.
I can't do it because it's not part of this project.
So do we have enough with just three of us?
It's a quorum. Okay.
If you don't now, you can go.
No, yeah, it's, sorry.
Yeah. So I, I'll make the motion to approve the request to withdraw without prejudice the application associated with McArthur Ave. I don't know if we have a number, lot number, street number or something in particular, but. Three?
Three.
Three, McArthur Ave. And we'll take under request, I guess, that consideration be made in the future regarding fees paid to date related to said project.
Yeah, I don't mind if we put a timeframe on that.
You can't even request that until you file again.
Oh, is that right?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
All right, second motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Abstain. Three-minute break?
Yes, absolutely. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we're taking a three-minute break.
It's a good break. I'm actually.
Three minutes. Thank you. So, I'll touch it, John. We. Is the Alexander Estates Frederickson Road, just as a point of business, I am in a butter, so I'm going to be recusing myself. I'm going to sit in the audience as in a butter. Our clerk, John Weddleton, is going to step up as the chair. I'm the vice chair, but our chair is out six tonight, so just as an order of business, we're kind of going down the line. So that's what's going on up here administratively and we'll get the hearing opened and started.
Good evening, everybody. So you have the third string here tonight. So I'm going to ask the, our new assistant clerk, Ken, I'll read the notice of public hearing.
The notice is hereby given in accordance with Mass. General Law Chapter 48 and 41 and the Town of Norfolk zoning bylaws and the Planning Board rules and regulations. The Planning Board will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, January 6th, 2015, at 8:30 PM in Room 124 in the Norfolk Town Hall, 1 Liberty Lane, Norfolk, Massachusetts, on the application for approval of a preliminary subdivision for property located off Frederickson Road entitled Alexander Estates and Frederickson Development LLC, plans by American Engineering LLP, Inc. of Millis, Mass., dated November 21, 2014. Subdivision is proposed to have 11 lots. See assessors map 13 block 46, lot 37-1 in the R1 zoning district. Plans, applications, and associated materials are at the Planning Board office and may be inspected during their office hours.
You here for the applicant?
I am.
Name for the record, please.
Thank you. Again, American with American Engineering here on behalf of the applicant, Frederickson Development LLC.
I just was in receipt of this letter from your firm just now.
Correct. I submitted tonight preliminary traffic analysis and also a letter regarding some additional discussions we'd like to have with you about this one.
Yeah, what I'd like you to do, because I, I do think this is important to read and since I haven't had a chance, I'd like you to read into the record, Forrest, please, before you get started.
It's quite long.
It's a page and a half.
Oh, you're talking about my letter?
Yes, exactly.
Sure. Would you rather do that after I've explained the project a little bit so that it's in context?
That would be fine.
Okay.
Yes, thank you.
So, should I present the project?
Yes.
Great. We're here this evening to talk about a preliminary subdivision application for a project at the end of Frederickson Road. The last time we were here talking uniformly, my father was here, Rick. He has since retired, so I've taken the project over and I'll be handling it from here on out. I'm also here with Maureen Schleck, who is our traffic consultant. She can speak to the preliminary traffic report that we provided to you this evening and answer any questions that you had about the work they've done, the preliminary work they've done. They have not completed a comprehensive traffic study as of yet. That would be part of the definitive application. The project proposes to take a 17-acre parcel with an existing home at the end of Frederickson Road and subdivide it into a subdivision consisting of three lots, three roads, one through road, and then two cul-de-sac side roads with 11 lots.
Excuse me, maybe we should, we have to do this sometimes. Put it, we'll put it here. We can do that.
Do we have small plans of this?
Small plans, 11 by 17s.
Dan, did you bring small plans for the, the members? You have small plans?
I did not bring them, I'm sorry. We submitted several copies. The next time I come, I'll have 11 by 17s.
Do you have any copies on you, Betsy?
I do, I think I do have some live copies in the office.
Could you get a couple so we could spread them out as we could see them, please?
So, first off, I'd just like to give you a summary of the existing conditions of the property. This is the existing conditions plan. In red is the boundaries of the property. In the easterly corner is a large wetland area. It's about four acres of the 17 acres. This darker green section is the wooded portion of the property. There is an isolated vegetated wetland up here in the northwesterly corner of the site. And then down here is the existing house, which is expected to be demolished. An existing barn, which is also in poor condition and is expected to be demolished. And then there's some lawn slash pasture areas around here. My botanist tells me that it was used as a tree farm, a Christmas tree farm sometime many, many years ago. And there's a little pond here, that looks to me to be a dug pond, probably an old farm pond, kind of at the mouth of this wetland area here to the northeast. That's the existing condition of the property. There's a little trail that runs through here. Soil's conditions on the property are good, we're digging some test pits in the coming next week or two, just to confirm, but the soils are supposed to be sandy soils, this half of the property, very sandy soils, on this half of the property, sandy with some potential legeau crops. We'll be digging test pits in the vicinity of the roads and the drainage facilities and on some of the lots to confirm suitability for the drainage systems we're proposing for the roads we're going to be constructing, and also for septic systems. So the proposal is a conventional, single-family subdivision. As I mentioned earlier, three roads are proposed. One is a through road, proposing to connect Frederickson with Oakview, that would be Road A. Road B is a dead-end road, it's about 380 feet, dead-end road here that would service 1, 2, 3, 4 lots on this side. And then Road C is just under 500 feet, another dead-end road that would service 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6 lots. It would be one lot on Frederickson Road, fronting on the existing portion of Frederickson Road. The lots are all in accordance with the requirements of the zoning bylaw, 30,000 square foot zoning, 150 feet of frontage, everything meets the circles, the shape factors, we've provided all that information on your plans, and I think your consultant has looked at that and confirmed that that's the case. The only lot that is oversized is Lot 11, and that basically is going to hold, you know, the large wetland in the northeast corner of the property. There are also three parcels, and this is something that we'll be discussing a little later with respect to the letter that was just mentioned, but your regulations currently require that stormwater basins be on separate parcels. So we have provided that in our preliminary plan, I'll discuss it in a minute, the proposed stormwater management system, but we have a stormwater basin proposed in this vicinity, a stormwater basin proposed in this vicinity, and an underground stormwater infiltration system proposed here. So the three parcels comply with the regulatory requirement for a separate parcel for each of those stormwater BNP's. This is the entire property, and one of the comments, maybe Gino made it, was that he wanted to see the entire site on one sheet, so I started to address those comments, and this is the whole property, or the grading sheet, so this is the proposed grading plan. And, you know, essentially what we're doing is we're coming uphill from Frederickson off the cul-de-sac, we have the level intersection the regulation requires, 2% or less, and then we are going uphill to a crown right about here, and then we go downhill and tie into Oakview Trail. The grading of that Road A complies with the regulations, it meets the vertical curve requirements. There are two existing cul-de-sacs at the end of Frederickson. Frederickson has a 30-foot layout, but there is a small paved cul-de-sac at the end of it, some of it's in the layout, some of it's outside the layout. We would propose to remove that, obviously, and extend through with our road. Oakview Trail has a formal cul-de-sac with the layout extending at the end. We would propose to remove that cul-de-sac and simply pave through the road, so at the end, when we were complete, you would have Oakview Trail traveling through as a continuous roadway within the cul-de-sac. The paved portion of the cul-de-sac would be removed, physically removed, and loaned and seeded and converted basically to lawn area. It would still be owned by the town unless and until the selectmen decided to perhaps convey this to the joint property owner. That's not something that we can address, but it is something certainly that the town could do after the project is complete. That would be up to the board of selectmen, I would assume, as the road commissioner for the project. The grades for Roads B and C are basically dictated by the intersection grade here. This road comes off relatively level, up 2%, and then we go up, I think, to 6% or 7% and then, so there's, up in this area, there's some excavation involved, there's some cuts involved, this is uphill. This area down here has some interesting topography. Basically, there's an existing ridge right through here, and it sits up about 20 feet above the surrounding terrain. So what we propose to do is we basically propose to take the top half of that ridge off, we'll cut that down, 6, 8, 10 feet in some places, and we use that material to fill out for the house pads for the adjacent homes adjacent to the road. So at the end of the day, although there's a lot of topography presently, there won't be, we'll have the roads up at the elevation of the road or proximal to the elevation of the road, and then behind the houses, it would probably drop off towards the existing grade, existing terrain.
What's a typical drop-off that you would expect to experience?
6 feet, something like that. You know, by the time, well, the road is cutting this down 8 or 10 feet.
Let me clarify my question, my fault. You mentioned the backyard drops off.
Yes, it would drop off.
I know, how much?
I'm thinking maybe 6 feet.
6 feet?
Yeah, so what we would do is we would take, we would take this ridge and we would cut it down partially for our road, and then we would use that material to fill out for the house pads, and then you'd have like a walkout backyard from the house.
I thought you said 60, that's why I...
No, 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 6. As far as utilities are concerned, before I get into stormwater management, basic standard stuff for utilities, we have water in Frederickson Road, which I'm told is a ductile iron pipe. We have water in Oakview Trail, which I'm told is a PVC pipe. So we will be connecting that through. We had proposed an 8-inch pipe, I saw a comment that maybe something larger might be appropriate, that's fine with us, whatever the board's consultants in the town thinks is appropriate. We would connect that water line through, we have an existing hydrant at the end of Frederickson that we would remove, the town is interested in taking it for extra parts, we would give that to them, install a new hydrant here, install a new hydrant at the end of Oakview Trail, and then we would have hydrants at the either, either end of our new, two new subdivision cul-de-sacs. And that would basically, that provides a significant benefit to the water system because this is a very long dead end right now. So that would then loop the system through, provide greater circulation, reduce any stagnant water issues that might be experienced on Frederickson Road, and improve water circulation in the area as a whole. So if I get into, again, stormwater management, I do want to skip to one issue, one of the waivers that we're requesting, and I think it was discussed previously, in a preliminary way. Road A is either, under the definition of the regulation, a primary or secondary road, depending, and we haven't done the full traffic study yet, PSC has intimated that it might end up being a primary road, it may also fall out being a secondary road. Either way, though, secondary or primary requires a 60-foot layout, either 26 or 28 feet of pavement. The layout of Frederickson Road is 30 feet wide, the layout of Oakview Trail is 50 feet wide. In our mind, a 60-foot layout doesn't really make sense here, it can be accommodated if the town wants it, but in my mind, a 50-foot layout makes the most sense. You extend Oakview Trail, basically, that layout width through. Paved width at 26 or 28 feet, I think, is certainly inappropriate for the development, it's inconsistent with what's around it, the paved width at Oakview is 24, the paved width at Frederickson is 20. So some of the comments that I've seen, and I received several comment letters today, and I've read through them all, but we were, our waiver request, as presented presently, is to reduce the paved width on Road A to 24 feet, to have it be classified as a residential street with a 50-foot layout, which makes sense with the surrounding area, but it may make sense to go down from 24 feet. And I think some of the suggestion that I saw was perhaps that from the end of Frederickson to the intersection would be 22 feet, and then maybe from the intersection to Oakview would be 24, and you'd create that transition from Frederickson to Oakview. We're obviously open to any conversation along those lines, whatever the board thinks is most appropriate, is what we'll implement in our design, in our plan. Stormwater management, I'm going to start with, by telling you what we have shown on the plans, we submitted our application based on your regulations. We have proposed a series of catch basins and manholes and pipes consistent with the requirements of your regulations. We have to have manhole, catch basins at intersections and every 300 feet, we have to have manholes connecting the catch basins to the stormwater basins, your regulations require that the stormwater basins be on separate parcels, that they be 100 feet from houses, that they be 100 feet from streets, that they be 100 feet from wetlands, et cetera. So we have proposed that with some minor exceptions, we are asking for a waiver to allow this basin to be within 100 feet of the front line, which is the street layout, it's about 60 feet or so. We are also asking that this basin and this underground facility be allowed to be within 100 feet of the new houses in the project, not in existing houses around the project, but the new houses in the project. The reason being that these basins, with the topography of the site, these basins will be physically below the nearest foundation, the nearest basements in our development. So there's really no technical or engineering reason why you would need that 100-foot gap between the two. Water doesn't go uphill, it only goes down.
Before we go too much farther on stormwater, has any soil testing been done on the site?
I'm going out there in the next week or two.
None's been done?
Not to date.
Have you got, you've got some of your detention areas and underground tanks and the resource areas for conservation, has that been approved by conservation yet?
We have not been to the conservation.
All right, so right now, the stormwater management basically is a big unknown.
Well, it's a preliminary proposal.
All right, I understand, so we don't have to spend too much time on that without any testing them, but I think in respect to Walter's question, I think it was a little bit deceiving. When you take road number, number C.
C.
What is the existing grade at Station 300 and the end of the cul-de-sac on, on Road C, existing grade?
The existing grade at Station, I'll have to look at the detailed plan.
Say Station 350, Station 350 and then the end of the cul-de-sac.
The existing grade at Station 350 is about 240, 250, I believe, and at the end of the cul-de-sac, the existing grade is 220.
220.
So that's that area where that ridge line drops off.
And what's, what's the elevation in the middle of Lots 6 and 7?
224, 222, 226.
So it's a drop of how many feet?
From the existing grade?
Yeah, exactly.
The existing grade down to that elevation is about 25 feet.
Okay, take the other side of this, this, I call this the peninsula roadway that's surrounded by cliffs, because generically on paper, it looks super, when you walk it, it's frightening, and I wonder how a plan is before us with this type of setup, and you've been pretty mechanical on our zoning bylaws and rules and regulations, you admitted the one that talks about fostering, preserving the rural character of the town of Norfolk. And basically, I think what, your letter, which I scanned quickly in rebuttal to our consultant's letter, talking about not doing an open space plan, the subjective part of the bylaw that I just mentioned addresses things like going from two existing neighborhoods, 20, 30, 40, 50-year-old neighborhoods, totally wooded, and creating with your cuts and fills a 20-acre prairie. To me, that's the problem with this, before we go further, this is an engineered plan, obviously, do our regulations call for landscape architect to do design on subdivisions?
Only on, on open space.
Only on open space, okay, which is what we're looking for. To me, the fills and the cuts here, and what you're going to be doing to this parcel, you're maiming the section between two established neighborhoods. So to me, no, please, please, to me, this is a poor first attempt at this plan. And when you look at it, our planner asked you to put house plans on there, where the boxes are going, I know it. We're also going to color in all the tree area that would have to be removed for the grading, and you come to find out, you are just massacring this whole center of the spot, which is why I think the planner and our consulting engineer asked for an open space plan. Now, you're about to read your letter on, I believe, why you're against doing an open space plan, the reasons, before I even read the letter...
No, my letter speaks to drainage, not to open space development.
It doesn't, it doesn't. See, you're not, you're not against taking this subdivision and doing an open space plan.
Well, here's the issue with open space plan, and we've looked at this.
Do you have a scheme on it?
No.
Did you do sketches on it?
I have not drawn anything normally that I have for you.
All right.
The issue with the open space bylaw is twofold. The first is that, I'm going to show you this, the way the bylaw is written, it doesn't suit the site, it doesn't fit the site. One of the requirements...
In your opinion?
Yes. And one of the requirements of the open space bylaw is that within a surface water, should be this farm pond, can't have a house within 200 feet of it, structure. Okay, so that means that this whole area here becomes ruled out for, for house development. So this, in effect, becomes the open space. So in order to get at and develop the rest of the site, we obviously still need the through road, and then we need to have the same road design essentially, except probably a little bit shorter, not, not a lot, but probably a little bit shorter. We would still need a dead-end road coming up here, because our houses would now have to be, so all, under open space, there's a 10% bonus, so now it's maybe 12 lots. You're going to take all 12 lots and you're going to, going to put all 12 houses all around here, because this becomes the open space area. So you're going to end up with this road, you're going to end up with this road, and in my view, it doesn't really accomplish much.
Well, that's your view, but we have a view of a planner, we have a view of our consulting engineer that say this at least deserves a few attempts at sketch designs for an open space. If not, what you're asking for cuts and fills is probably going to be a problem. What you're asking for earth removal is probably going to be a problem. You understand you're not allowed to take loomed topsoil off of this site.
We wouldn't remove any dirt from the site.
You have a lot of topsoil there when it comes down to it, but basically, the fact is, without at least doing some sketches and designs, and not to say you have to have 11 lots in there, you've got to come up with something that makes this thing work without maiming the whole section, my view, anyway. Yeah, I think that we normally go by our planners and consulting engineers' advice, and everybody comes up with the same opinion that this at least deserves the thought of a chance for sketches for open space. Whether you have 11 lots or eight lots or whatever, I think is secondary. I think most prominently, you've got to make this property fit in between two subdivisions that have been existing for 30, 40 years that are totally wooded. You've got to make this work, and this, this generic sketch, talking about the mathematics on a piece of paper, when you go walk the sites, this, this, this is not a good plan in my view.
I would respectfully disagree, so let me speak to, let me speak to this for a second. Okay, this is, this is a hump, it's a ridge, it's, you'll see it when you go out there, it's interesting from a topographical standpoint. It's a big ridge, and the point of the, of the design is to take the ridge down so that it is not so pronounced. Obviously, you have to clear the road right away, that's, that's standard in any subdivision, because you need room for the utilities, the sidewalks, the grass strips, the curving, the pavement, I mean, that, that's a necessity. And, and the point of the design, the approach of the design, is to take that ridge, which kind of sticks up in the middle of everything else, knock it down halfway, so that you can then situate houses along each side of it and not have to decimate everything around it. All those houses can have walkout basements, and they can walk out to natural terrain in the back. You know, if we take that hump and we take it down 10 feet, and the houses sit a foot or two below the road, you have a walkout basement in the back, you're walking out at existing grade. It's not unmanageable, and it's not going in and, you know, destroying the entire site and clearing everything, not at all.
What you call an interesting roadway, a topography, I... When you call an interesting roadway, a topography, I call scary because we walked it. We looked down.
Sure.
And basically, you're taking out half the mountain to make the rest of it work.
Well, we're taking the ridge out so that the road fits in and that the houses will then blend in with the topography of the road.
What I'm saying is, in, in my purview, you've got to do a better job. You've got to work without removing so much material and make this subdivision work, not just by the exact letter of some of the bylaws. You've got to make it work with all the bylaws.
Which we're doing.
Did you, did you remember the one I talked about, preserving the rural characteristic of the town and scenic?
Yes, and I don't...
This doesn't do it.
Well...
This doesn't do it.
I mean, if it pleases the chair, I mean, I just would make the comment that it's not unusual for projects like this to start one way and to finish in a very different way. And I think we've accomplished that as a planning board, working with developers in a fairly amicable fashion. So, I don't know that you have significant history working with the town, working with the boards, but that's not unusual for, for this board, for that to happen.
No, agreed. And I, I mean, I'll discuss with the applicant, doing sketches for an open space. But, you know, again, I'm just telling you what, what you're going to see. Because we need to be able to access the long wings of the site. You're going to see the same basic road configuration.
Nothing personal, but I think what you're telling us we're going to see, I think we want to see some sketches.
No, I understand it. I'm just explaining...
Question for you.
The other question, the other issue that comes up with open spaces is that the bylaw, and this is a problem with a lot of these open space bylaws, the bylaw says that the percentage of wetland area in the open space parcel can't be greater than the overall percentage of wetlands on the entire site. So, when, when we start, this is the natural open space area. I cannot create this as an open space parcel because the percentage of wetlands on that portion is significantly greater than the percentage of wetlands on the entire property. And this is a common issue with these, with these regulations.
Excuse me a second. Does that, does that qualify for a waiver if this was to proceed and that was the case?
It's a zoning requirement.
Pardon me?
It's in the zoning bylaws, so it can't be waived.
Okay.
So, that's one of the issues that we have to wrestle with as an open space development. But I will discuss with the applicant, preparing some, some conceptual drawings of an open space layout and what that might look like, so that the board can take a look at it and see what they think.
Just a matter of questioning. You've got a, a lot of work in the resource areas.
Well, I don't actually have a lot of work. I have a little bit of work in the resource areas, and that's something that obviously...
I guess a little is relative, but...
We need to, we need to go see the conservation commission about, let me just explain to you what we have.
No, I know what you have. I've reviewed the plan. But my question theoretically, when you're creating a subdivision and you're taking out this much material, do you think you're going to get any leadway from the conservation commission for working in resource areas at all, including putting underground detention tanks in our area? Do you think you're going to succeed there?
I'm guessing not, based on your comments there.
Good guess.
So, I will explain to you that the point of the underground here was so that it would continue to mimic existing condition. You know, putting an open basin here requires excavation, disruption of the grades, recontouring. Putting an underground facility here allows us to excavate, put the underground facility in, cover it over, loam it and seed it, and it's exactly the same as it is today, which is a grass field.
Is the applicant here tonight?
That's, yes. This is Frank Bondi. He's the applicant.
How are you?
Hi, how are you Frank? I, I think you should relate to Dad, my comments, and...
I got them.
You got them? Okay, because for a man like him, this is not his best shot. It's far from it. This can be way better. All right? Because you have respect to people on both sides. This has got to fit in. Because if it doesn't fit in and you're complying with zoning, you still have to get a permit to take this earth off the site. That's a special permit by this board with a super majority vote. You still have to get approval from conservation to work in any resource area. So, I mean, you've got ways to go. And, and to me, working with the abutters on both sides of the subdivision is a hell of a lot better way than trying to come and tell me and use euphemisms about how pretty this looks on paper, et cetera, et cetera, when I've walked the site and I just think it's a poor attempt. So, you could mention that to your dad. I'll see you again at conservation. And you've got to give this a better stab, and nothing against Mr. Merrick's word, but we want to see some multiple designs on paper showing sketches that work, that minimize the cuts and fills, that minimize the tree clearing, to make this thing fit in. Okay? All right.
And just to clarify for the board, there would be no earth removal from the site? Any material that was excavated for roads would be used on the site?
You've done those calculations already?
No, but I know from my experience that the amount of volumes involved would be used at the site.
Then you, then you would surprise me.
Okay. Okay. So, to speak to the letter, and I don't know if you still want me to read it.
Yeah, I do.
It doesn't speak to open space issues. It speaks to drainage design concepts.
Yeah, just read it anyway.
Sure.
Do you like the hard copy?
Yeah.
Is that, that's the letter, correct?
Okay. On this letter we wrote today, I wrote today. Dear members of the board, based on the, some of the comments received in my meeting with the town planner and TPW staff, there appears to be a desire to implement so-called green or low-impact developments, stormwater techniques for this development. Unfortunately, the current Norfolk subdivision regulations are quite rigid in their requirements for crowned roads, slope granite curbing, catch basins at 300-foot intervals, drain manholes, stormwater BMPs on separate parcels with large setbacks toward joining uses, et cetera. These requirements run contrary to the principles of low-impact stormwater management techniques, which emphasize approaches such as country drainage with no curving and no catch basins and many small stormwater BMP systems integrated with the landscape, as opposed to large stormwater BMPs segregated on separate parcels. We understand the board has accepted LID stormwater practices on other subdivisions, for example Norfolk Landing, and that the applicant, and the applicant is interested in incorporating such techniques into the subdivision design. In order to do so, however, the board would need to grant several waivers from various stormwater requirements of your regulations. We therefore request feedback from the board as to whether they would entertain waivers intended to facilitate the implementation of the following LID stormwater management practices in this development. Number one, reduced pavement width. Changing design parameters from 24 to 28 feet paved width with slope granite edging to 20 to 22-foot paved width with monolithic low-profile tuminous berm would reduce the amount of impervious coverage associated with the development and would be consistent with LID practices. LID means low-impact development. Number two, country-style stormwater management. Techniques that could be implemented would be consistent with the Norfolk Landing development as follows. Eliminating catch basins, drain manholes and associated piping in favor of shallow roadside grass swales that can be integrated with the landscape of the adjacent home's front yard and security. Cross-sloping the roadway to one side in lieu of crowned roads so that the aforementioned roadside swale can be installed on the non-sidewalk side only. Using smaller but more numerous infiltration and detention BMPs scattered throughout the project in easements on various house lots in lieu of on separate parcels. Such an approach would require that the various setback requirements for these BMPs be reduced. And using larger roof runoff infiltration systems on individual lots and counting them towards the overall development stormwater management design. Presently, the regulations do not allow the design engineer to account for the added benefit of these roof runoff infiltration systems. We look forward to discussing the implementation of such techniques with the board.
So, what you're calling stormwater management, all of these things, this low-impact drainage is all what's saving some of the environment the trees are about. And you're listing all these things, all of these things, we have the right to waive for you. These aren't zoning bylaws. These are regulations. Who's to say that we're going to make you do a, a low-impact subdivision and make you keep granite curbing? That doesn't make any sense. Of course, we'd waive the curbing or change the crown of the road or a bunch of things.
Mr. Chairman, the, the point of the letter was to ask if the board had an appetite for those types of alternative design practices, which would need waivers.
That would have been a good start, rather than saying you couldn't do it and come here with no sketches, et cetera. That would have been a better start.
I'm not saying we can't do it. I'm, I'm asking you if we can do those.
I think by the letters from our consultants, just talking to you about asking you to do this type of drainage, it should be quite evident to you that that's what we're for. We're for saving and maintaining as much of this as we can by low-impact devices. And granite curbing isn't as essential as having a bunch of trees saved and having catch, and having catch basins and detention basins replaced with grassy swales. That was the point. That was the point of their review. That was my point in looking at this project and looking for open space.
That's wonderful. And I just want to convey to you that we, we drew the plans to follow your regulations. And the point of this meeting is to discuss these things with you so we can get that feedback and know, because I, I don't want to waste my client's money designing things that the board is not going to entertain.
Then we're on the same page, and that's great. I think that's super. I've talked enough. I'm going to open up the questions to the rest of the board here. Walter?
Well, I think you hit them, John. The, the issue of the topography is, is really, I'm going to find the one, plan here with the elevations in it must be.
Well, it would be the grading sheets, probably. You'd be looking at sheets.
To John's earlier discussion about topography and cuts and fills, I have not walked the property, so I don't have the benefit of, of John's perspective on it. Nevertheless, looking at the topography here, you're saying that taking the top 10 feet off that ridge that runs through there...
Yes.
Is sufficient to fill in what you need to fill in for the house slot plots?
Yes.
And would provide the type of elevation where the front of the house is a couple of feet below the, the street level and the backyard is six or seven feet below the first floor, something like that?
Yes.
Is that, is that what I'm hearing?
Yes.
And there's nothing that would have to come off the property? It would all stay, it would move around, but it wouldn't have to come off the property?
Yeah, I don't foresee the need to remove material from the site. Obviously, when we do the definitive, we'll get into that in greater detail, but...
All right.
The cuts here would be used to create the front yard.
Fair enough. Using your experience and based on the early discussion about an open space proposal, your first, as I understood it, your first thought about that was that you would have to avoid those three lots of, on that side of the...
This inside corner.
Right.
Right.
And therefore, those three lots would have to be, assuming you wanted to try to maintain the same number of lots and put into the space that exists around those other guys.
Right, around here.
Yeah. Let's just go down that road for a moment.
Sure.
That's probably Plan A in terms of open space. So, well, how much cut and fill is required under that?
It would be very similar because the road, so the, the cuts and fills are driven by the requirements of your regulations, which of course you can waive. But if we look at, we take a quick look at the profile of Road A. This is the profile of Road A. This is Frederickson.
Yep.
This is Oakview Trail.
Yep.
So, with coming off of Frederickson, we're, we're generally coming uphill to Frederickson at the end, and then the cul-de-sac kind of dips down a little bit. We would take that dip out.
Yep.
We will come back into the cul-de-sac and continue the uphill slope till we get to the intersection. Now, your regulation requires that the intersection have a 2% slope, or less, very flat.
Yep.
So, we have to come up here and kind of level off. So, there isn't a lot of room to make grade adjustments there. Once we get there, we come up, there's a natural hill here, so we would come up to the peak of the hill, and then we have the crown in the road right about here. And then, we would come down and tie into the existing grade of Oakview. So, the, the elevation of all the roads, basically, is driven by this profile. Because we can only come up so fast, we have to level off for the intersection, then we have to tie into Oakview Trail.
And the intersection therefore dictates the beginning of the cul-de-sac, right?
Precisely.
Sure.
And the other two cul-de-sacs have to have, you know, again, a 2% slope for the first 100 feet. So, that drives how quickly we can go down or up into, to matching with the existing terrain. So, you know, in...
Do you have the profiles of those two?
I do, yes. So, these are the profiles for the two roads. So, this is Road A, and this is Road B. So, you can see Road A is coming uphill from that intersection. So, we're working from the elevation that we have for Road A. We're coming up into the slope, and then, you know, this is an excavation through here on Road A. And, and again, we're constrained by this 2%, and then we go right up, you know, really as quickly as we can under the regulation, and then we have to level off because the cul-de-sac can't be steeper than 4%. So, if the board were to consider waivers to some of these slope requirements, some of that cuts would go away. They would be reduced. The, similarly, on Road C, same thing here. So, this is the ridge, and you're, you know, this is, we're running along the long axis of the ridge, and you can see where the road center line is. It's kind of up and down a little bit. But you can see through here, you know, we're, we're taking probably 10 feet off the top of that hill with the idea that, and the grade adjacent to this ridge on either side is down in here. So, the notion is that we take this material off the top, kind of dimming the whole topography of that mound, and then you build houses in front of the road on either side, you fill in for the front yards, and then the backyard to walk out to grid.
What's the length of those two roads again?
This road here is 492 feet. This road here is 389 feet. And the Road A, the connecting road, is about 500 feet between the two existing streets. So, back to your question, you know, following the thought about the open space, we would really need to have a similar kind of, I mean, I'm open to suggestion, and we'll look at other options, but with the through street and the fact that the property extends out linearly in this direction and linearly in this direction, you know, you end up having to throw out a road this way and that way. And if we're going to have, if we're going to put our houses on this outside edge of the road, the road has to be in this vicinity right where the ridge is. So, there's not a lot of play there because the open space would end up centering, I believe, around this area of the site, which is ironically the area of the site with kind of the least amount of topography, this area in here. So, as I said, we'll explore that. We'll provide some sketches to the board for your consideration, but that is, I thought about this, I've looked at it, and, and that's kind of where I ended up. And you would basically just end up with smaller lots. Open space is more conducive in a zoning area district where they have larger lot requirements. For example, the Norfolk Landing project, the open space lots, I think were 40,000 square feet in size, the open space lots. The base zoning here is 30,000. So, if we're going to try to put these houses all through here, you know, that's going to go down to 20,000, pretty small lot, onsite septic systems, you're going to end up, to put a house on a 20,000-square-foot lot with an onsite septic system, you have to clear most of that lot. You know, you can preserve more trees with the larger lots. So, we'll, we'll look at these things. You know, we'll do some sketches, and we'll bring them to the board for discussion, consideration.
Yeah. Because you, you're saying a lot of things with just...
I understand. You want to see it on paper.
Yeah, and a lot of them I don't agree with.
I understand.
Especially the smaller lots, and the bigger lots, they bore trees. I don't agree to a lot of that. Especially a septic system fitting on a half-an acre lot when they fit on 10,000-foot lots in many places. As a minimum, you want to stick with this, you've got to come up with a cut and fill schedule of difference. And you say all, you, you're not going to have to remove any.
For the definitive, yeah, we would have a whole cut and fill analysis.
You know how many, in our regulations, how many cubic yards of fill are allowed to be removed in a subdivision construction?
Not off the top of my head.
Okay, then you shouldn't be talking about not having to remove any when you don't know what the regulation is. It's 500 cubic yards. It's 20 trucks, that's it. This whole project, you're allowed to take 20 trucks off this site and no loom. After that, you need a special permit for earth removal.
Right. And we, and I guess what I'm saying to you is I don't anticipate that we would need And I guess what I'm saying to you is I don't anticipate that we would need to remove any earth from the site.
Good, okay, good.
That it would all stay on property, especially the loom.
Questions?
Yeah, John, what about to you?
Yes, please.
The issue that was raised about the percentage of wetlands on an open space being required to be the same as it would be on the full lot, that seems like a catch-22. How do you really work your way around that?
I guess since it, go ahead, Jim.
Well, one way that's been used in the past is to create a parcel of a lot of those wetlands and remove it, yeah, remove it from the project.
It's possible.
And then you can, then you can need it.
Yeah, if we were to do an A&R to create an unbuildable parcel that would take most of these wetlands out of it, then that is a way to work around.
All right, so you see, you're getting me more concerned now, because some of these statements on rebuttal are coming back not to be, not to hold water, and this is my problem. That's why I want to see a couple of sketches done with open spaces and not necessarily 11 lots, and trying these things out, and coming forward, we're open to any wave as if you're saving the integrity of the neighborhood. This is what has to be done rather than just talk. Talk is cheap.
I understand.
Jeff?
Well, I share the same concerns as far as the cuts and fills. I have driven to the end of Frederickson, matter of fact, many times, but I haven't actually gotten out and tried to assess the ridge line.
You want to do a sidewalk?
Well, that's, and that's why I bring it up. I think that would be a good, a good thing for the larger board to do that.
It would be.
And also, take into consideration during the sidewalk, the impact in terms of tree clearing and other aspects of, you know, as John referred to, the character of not just the town, but in this case, a couple neighborhoods, really, up against Oakview.
Average.
So, I would be very much interested in doing that. You know, beyond that, I have issues where the idea is to try to reconcile what are two adequate roads presently in terms of Oakview and Frederickson, in terms of width and, you know, there's a lack of sidewalks and other things, okay, in terms of what exists today, and my opinion is, this project would exacerbate, any issues that we have today would be magnified substantially as a result of this. So, you know, trying to reconcile these two roads that are not related in any way today and to try to reconcile them in the form of a four-way intersection like that, I have significant concerns in doing that. Safety concerns in particular.
You know, this roadway is going to end up being what, 3,500 feet straightaway?
Well, it's hardly a straightaway, but yes.
Well, Frederickson is over 2,000, so it's pretty straight. It's minor curves, but still, you've got a cut through here that's going to be over a half a mile long. We have a 500-foot regulation on cul-de-sacs. That also is something that could be waived. Frederickson is a, is a separate situation where it's longstanding, and the family that's selling this lot is the same family that sold the whole street. And I don't know, maybe worth your while to get one of your sketches that you're going to do for us, that Mr. Bovee is going to happily participate in. One of those sketches might be just showing how this would look with a cul-de-sac and not a connection through, and seeing how much you could save with the neighborhood that way. And then it'll be up to this board to decide whether this, the alleviation of the safety concerns and the saving and preservation of our, of our character of this whole part of town is worth that. We also still could have a water main connection through this property without a roadway connection, which I think is one of the big things from DPW.
So, your suggestion is?
More sketches.
No, I understand. Point me in the right direction. Are you talking about extending Oakview Trail into a cul-de-sac?
No, no.
You're talking about extending Frederickson Road?
Yes.
So
Into a cul-de-sac.
Frederickson Road would come down here, and then in a cul-de-sac, you know, 50 feet away from this cul-de-sac or something like that?
Not 50 feet necessarily. I'm talking about coming up with a plan that works, that saves the neighborhood, and I am not nearly as good as you. I can't anticipate without starting to do all the math and sketching things out, but the concept and what the parameters are, come up with something that saves a bunch of this woodland, that minimizes the roadway to save your applicant some cost and make this thing work better. You've already got an answer to the wetlands and the open space now by creating a separate parcel. Look deeper into this, come up with a sketch. As I'm saying, if you do a couple of open space sketches minimizing the cuts and fills and the tree disturbance, come up with another one that shows some lots on a cul-de-sac in Frederickson. As I said, you don't have to necessarily go for the 11 because it may work better with less. Your 11th one is going to be an affordable anyway, which won't make people in the Affordable Housing Committee happy, but
So, I have a question about that. Just assuming that we are where we are with 11 lots or whatever, 10 lots or whatever, the affordable requirement of the zoning by law. Part of that equation, a significant part of that equation, I think, is there's provision, I think it was mentioned in one of the comment letters, that the affordable requirement can be met with duplex unit, either on one of these lots or on another property in town.
I think you probably would skip the other property in town, even though that hasn't turned out well. So, I probably can figure that the affordable, and somebody may correct me in the audience if I'm wrong, but I think you'd better assume the affordable will go on this site, and duplex is allowed.
Okay.
Again, you've got all of these components that you could work in with your, to me, and I speak for myself, but it sounds like the other two folks here are with me, to minimize the impact you're having on these two existing neighborhoods. Because you finish this, and you finish this, and you leave, and they live with it. So, that's your concern. That's what you've got to focus on to have any appreciation. And when you come to the Conservation Commission, it's going to be hotter. So, I have great faith that you're going to do a super job on the sketches before I open it up to the public, if you're finished, Jeff, and get some input. You're welcome to talk with either Gino or our consultants on, on things that may help you work this out to be a good, a good design.
Okay.
Jeff, are you finished with your questions?
Yeah, I mean, the only comment I would make is that, having gone through this exercise, I know it's significant cost to the applicant, but this isn't a bad thing for us to have some perspective as we go forward. I mean, sometimes it's a necessary thing. So, I don't want you to feel as though there's the some costs that, you know, can't be recovered.
Well, that would be fair.
So, you know, we have to go through a process, and this is part of a process. Obviously, this is a difficult project, given, you know, it's not a greenfield type of situation here. You've got, you've got a lot of interested parties here
Yes, we understand.
Here tonight, as
We had an amended filing with the Boves a year ago, and Frank was there and his dad. And we come up with a super job where all the neighbors stopped showing up at the hearings because they were content, it worked for both, and we walked away, and everybody was happy. And I'm confident this is going to turn out the same way.
One more, Tom?
Yep.
You know, John suggested you might even, in one of the many sketches that you're going to create, you might think about coming in and making, rather than a through, would make it in a cul-de-sac. You could consider that from the other end.
It's a good point. Why not? Why not?
Take a look.
Why not?
Oakview.
Why not?
Or both.
Or both, really, I'm saying both. Take a look at both.
Again, that's another good thought.
Both options.
Okay. Okay.
Can you say that again?
Well, John suggested that one of the potential sketches that he might look at for configuring the lots was not to make a through road from Frederickson to Oakview, but instead to make a cul-de-sac. And he suggested it come in from Frederickson, and I suggested that he also look at the one possibly with a cul-de-sac coming in from Oakview.
And then Jeff suggested maybe coming in a little bit from both streets and not connecting.
So, there's all kinds of opportunities there to do alternative layouts that might work better than what we're looking at here.
So, I mean, I'm stating the obvious probably to you, but I'll state it anyway. One of the things we try to do is to reach a solution that as many people as possible can be satisfied with, and we try to do that in a way that doesn't encumber the town by setting a precedent for the future. So, that's why we have consultants that try to help us through that process, because we have to be careful we don't grant something to this applicant that's going to encumber the town forevermore in terms of any other applicant that comes before the town.
Understood.
You've taken a site.
Here is comment number 18 from our consultant to the audience. Roadway A, which is the main road going from Frederickson to Mountain View, will comprise a key link in the roadway network of Norfolk. Trips generated by the 10 new single-family homes plus existing trips to be assigned to the new through street extending from Grove Street to King Street will result in 24-hour traffic volume exceeding the traffic generated by 50 single-family homes. That's why we've classified this as a primary road. So, in essence, these 10 lots will create traffic of a 50-lot subdivision. So, if there's any, if there's any impetus to work on a dead end as one of your sketches, this would be it. So, thank you, Dave.
You've had the privilege of doing a sidewalk, and I have not. I intend to do that, and it sounds like, Jeff, you'd like to do that as well.
You really have to to understand
Yeah, absolutely.
And, and don't get me wrong, Dan's done a great job wording things properly, and that's his job, and I respect him for it, but to understand the starting point, you've got to go walk this.
Yes.
Is the center line staked in these roads?
Uh, not yet. Would you like me to give you the torque? We could arrange time.
We'd like you to stake out the roadway, the center line of the roadway as it is now.
Yeah, good idea.
And then they can go on their own. But anyways, we're all set. I'm going to open up to the audience now. If anybody has a question, could you just state your name and take the microphone? And, yes.
Yeah. The microphone, microphone.
Dan?
My name's Scott Bragdon. I'm at 12 Frederickson Road. First of all, let me say I appreciate the thoughtful comments by this board. I very much appreciate it. There's a lot of rain down there. I'm assuming that something's going to get built, whether it's six houses or eight or 10. This board and other boards are going to figure that out, and that's going to happen. I also understand why in some cases it's useful to have a through road for public safety. I completely understand having a water pipe go through. These are neighborhoods, these are not new neighborhoods. There are houses that are 40 or 40 years old on Frederickson. It's also a noncompliant road, and it feeds out to Grove Street, which is equally a noncompliant curvy road, incapable of handling additional traffic. I do think, as John knows, I cut through his property. I think some of this would be cutting through some of these other neighborhoods. I can't for the life of me understand why it would be beneficial to the town to push this road through. I could see why it might be beneficial from a public safety point of view, but with the added traffic and stuff, it just, to me, makes no sense. As I look at your plan, if the plan went through as is, I see no benefit from the lots and stuff from putting it through. Matter of fact, those two houses, those two lots at the end, they had a, right away through it for the water, would be better lots as opposed to having a road down the side of them. I just, I think if you, if you walk that neighborhood, and having walked children down Grove Street on Halloween stuff, these are not roads that can handle additional traffic. And I really would appreciate some plans around looking at how we end it either there or coming up from the other way. I think it would make much more sense, it would be much, much safer. And then, I can only speak for myself, but as I said, I think there's going to be some development down there. However, how many houses it is, you guys are going to figure that out, and that'll be it. But I would appreciate some additional thought put into the safety of this road going through.
Thank you, Scott. Anybody else? Yes, sir?
I have some questions. Are we allowed to ask questions?
Absolutely, yes.
So, I'm, I'm Joe Russia, Chumount Rock Lane. So, I live on the lot right there at Oak Trail where the cul-de-sac is. So, a couple of questions. One is, I'm concerned, and since you've walked the property, you know as well, even though we're talking about taking the grade down on that, whatever you call it, barren or hill or whatever, I'm still concerned about how the drainage from those new lots even removed is going to flow to my house, Leftley's house next door, and the other couple of houses that are there, coming down. Because, and I, this is not meant to be any criticism, because I have not been involved in anything prior to this, but when I look at the trailside project and the back of some of those houses that come up on, off of Grove Street, down by Castle and all that area, there's a huge drop. And I don't know how that's being handled from a drainage standpoint, but I'm concerned about, you know, the drainage. We have, my septic system is back there, so I don't know how that would impact that septic system. So, I'm concerned about that, number one. I also like what some of the suggestions you guys are talking about, you just mentioned. You know, I don't see the benefit of the cut through all the way because, again, the traffic, and we know what traffic can do. When we look at some of the other projects that have happened, it's increased considerably, and there was a lot, there was more houses, and that's still added to the traffic. So, I am very concerned with those things, and I think we do need to look at some alternative methods and on options than what we're seeing here. And I agree that we really need to look at the topography. And one last point, and this has nothing to do necessarily with just Norfolk, there's other towns around us where there's been some major housing projects gone in, and the clear cutting that has gone on in those projects has been atrocious. There's one off 140 there in Rentham. That thing was all woods, and now it's basically just an open field with houses going in. It's just, and the lots are small. So, I don't know, are we looking to become an urban town, whether like a Watertown or a Wellesley or a Belmont where we put the houses on small lots? I hope not, because that's not why we moved out here in the first place.
Just to answer your first question, sir, when they develop this property, by our local regulations, they are required to keep all of the stormwater on their site. None is to leave their site. So, when the engineers design the drainage and it's reviewed by us, all of the water has to be contained. So, you may find as a result, you'll have less water coming onto your site that was initially running off from the abutting property. So, that should be
That's right.
That should be addressed.
Okay, great. Just wanted to make sure.
Thank you. Anybody else have a question?
Yeah.
Hello, my name is Matthew Flynn. I live at 26 Frederickson Road. My wife and I moved there a year and a half ago, and one of the main attractions was the natural beauty and the topography of the area, which we've had the chance to walk many times. And I've taken some beautiful pictures of the property that we're talking about here tonight. One of the, and I'm not an engineer, but one of the things that I've looked at, and I share Mr. Wollington's views on this, is that this looks like a typical conventional plan that's designed to maximize the number of buildable lots without any thought or care given to the topography of the natural beauty of the area. When you, when you clear cut and you take out areas and you cut and fill and you desecrate slopes in order to maximize the use of the lot, you lose a lot of the character of your neighborhood, and ultimately, you lose a lot of the character of your town. If you don't believe what I'm saying, go up off the North Street and waffle and take a look at Sun Rock Farm. Absolutely. That's right there. I share this gentleman's view that it can be good, clean thought of design in terms of building these lots with regards to the sensitivity of the people who live in the surrounding neighborhoods, and that I think much more thought and care needs to be given into that area. Because I certainly don't want to have to leave Norfolk, nor will I leave Norfolk, because I like where I live, and I hope others share that view also. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else question?
I would just like to ask
Just your name, please. Your name, please, ma'am? I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm Jane, but I'm
Thank you, yeah, okay, go ahead, Jane.
I would just like, I know there's a strong support in here from the neighborhoods, Frederickson and the surrounding roads. I would just like to have the people with, by a show of hands, have people here acknowledge what other people have said in terms of giving more thought into preserving the integrity of the neighborhood and what John said, so you can understand how many people here are looking for kind of a better plan. So, if people could raise their hands, you know, just to give you an idea of who supports it.
I think a recommendation that we circulate a sign-up sheet.
Sure. Mr. Chair? I understand, Mrs. Flynn, that is in our bylaws, but of course, as you know, it's subjective. And when a subdivision is done, it's not just the clearing of the road, it's the clearing of all the drainage basins, it's the clearing of the foundations, the septic fields, et cetera. So, the thought in trying to have natural drainage from an open space is to, rather than clearing, putting in these big basins, to just have water meander through grassy soils that go through. And where Mr. Merrick is talking about the soils being so sandy, it makes it a better opportunity to have this type of system because the water infiltrates quickly, so opportunity to have this type of system because the water infiltrates quickly so you can control a lot more of the runoff by the soils. Yes.
Mike, it's Bragdon. I can do it without, right?
No, it's...
It's for your hundreds of thousands of viewers at home.
For the record, I'm Mike Mahoney. I'm a resident at 11 Mountain Rock Lane. I moved in six months ago. As I look around the room, I look at people who have been in the neighborhood for a long time and I think one of the fears, I'll also state that I'm a Realtor, so I have a different perspective, but I think one of the concerns is the size of the homes. When you don't know what's going in and you're at the tail end of what has been your home for 25 or 30 years, you get concerned when a developer's gonna come in and maybe put a modular house just to get it up and do a spec development to get it off the books quickly. So, I guess my question would be, do you have any existing homes that you've built in the area that you could reference us to so we could at least do a drive-by? More than that, absolutely. To get an idea of scale, finish.
But just, you know, Frank, just because he shows you an upscale subdivision, that doesn't mean he's required to put it here. And unfortunately, we don't have any control over the size of the home.
Yeah, it's approved.
A lot of this comes in the integrity of the person doing the project. Thank you. Anybody else have a first question?
Hi, I'm Allison Light. I live at 11 Frederiksen Road. My only concern is that, well, a lot of concerns, but that many houses at the end of Frederiksen Road, Frederiksen Road is a very narrow, windy road, even though, you know, somewhat straight, but it's really pretty windy to get that many houses down, even if you don't have it go cutting through. If you have it coming in from Frederiksen, you're going to have a lot more traffic just from the houses that are gonna be going up there. And I don't think that Frederiksen can support that many houses, you know, coming off of it. You know, even days where, I have to say, when, you know, the disposal trucks come through, you can't have two cars on the street. You can really only have one car running through it. So, I think, at least from the Frederiksen side and I'm sure from the Mountain Rock side, we're just concerned with the number of homes that would be going up along.
Two of the things that we're gonna be...
The street can support it.
Two of the things we'll be looking at down the road is the changing in the width from the Frederiksen width to what this new road's gonna be and also some type of traffic mitigation to slow down the cars, especially if this ends up being a cut through. You have a second question now, sir?
I guess so based on what Allison just said, I'll be asking for at least one of the plans to be not a cut through to Frederiksen. That's one of the options?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, my name's Pete Smith, 7 Frederiksen Road. John, you mentioned about perhaps widening Frederiksen Road. Would that go down up to like 70 feet? How would, and who would pay for that, the town?
I don't think we've talked about widening the...
No, you said something about the traffic and we might have to...
I'm talking about one of the issues is gonna be, we have, we have road widths in our bylaws that talk about a 24-foot wide road that many times is waived, but we're gonna be connecting to Frederiksen, which is what, 20 feet? So, that's gonna be one of the issues, how that connection works. And it makes it more complicated if you have a longer stretch that's a cut through. And just as you leave this subdivision and you go into the existing Frederiksen Road, you've got a site easement distance there too because you've got a heavily wooded area with a curve. So, coming down from this Mountain Rock, coming around Frederiksen, there's a site distance issue there because of the way the Frederiksen Road is all wooded, which also adds to the need for some traffic review, yes.
One last question, I'm not sure I understood exactly what you were saying about the houses, but have, can you control what type of houses go on this, these properties?
No.
And so, we don't even know what they are?
No.
We don't know whether they're 5,000 square foot or 2,000.
No control.
Do we have an understanding of what you're putting there?
Well, I think indirectly in terms of the lots, you know, requiring septic, et cetera, so there are certain limitations just, just by, you know, just the sheer dimensions of what's required to support us.
Like the April house, four-bedroom, two-bath type of house or 3,000 square foot?
Well, I think, I mean, I think, I don't think we know until we get a little bit further into it.
Okay, but will that be something that's discussed before the final plans are approved? Or at least to get an understanding of what the builder is intending to do?
If he wants, if he wants to offer us that information... Yeah, as we go through, if he's willing to offer what his intention is or even bring in some elevations of what he intends to do from his perspective, that would be fine. We just can't tell him to commit to doing something there.
I think it's a fair statement, you know, for the applicant to do something less there, they would be looking for some advantages in terms of some reduced cost for the, for the project, okay? Whatever that means in terms of not having to widen a roadway, not having to put in some sidewalks, not having to do some things that this board can have an influence on, on those types of decisions. So, that's, that's the trade-off. I think you probably all recognize that, but, but that's part of the negotiation that happens question by question and that's, that's all a process that we go through for projects, so that's what we're doing.
Does that include utilities, like are we talking underground, are we talking old? But we don't, again, we don't know yet at this point.
Underground.
Underground, yeah, yeah.
Hi, I'm Sarah McKinnon on the 6 Oakview Trail, so we're on the right-hand side of the cul-de-sac of Oakview. So, the, so I have two questions. I wanted to just confirm that it is single-family homes?
Yes, that's zoning.
Okay, so you mentioned a duplex, so I'm not sure what a duplex home is.
There's something in our bylaws that if this project needs an affordable home, if it has 10 houses or more, the one affordable home can be accomplished by taking one of the homes and making it a two-family.
But it has to be designed to look like a single-family home.
Thanks, Gina.
And then I just had a, the topography is very unique, so if you feel the chance to walk it, I strongly suggest it because it's hills, it's, it's a beautiful piece of land, but it is up and down, so it is worth walking. There's, I'm just questioning about your comment about filling in kind of the right-hand side of the home, that would be our property and then, and you could maintain that and you had that comment in the very beginning that your intent was to make that straight and...
There's a, there's a ridge line between our site and your site. There's a big hill there, so that hill would remain. We would not disturb... Oh, the cul-de-sac.
You said you were gonna narrow it.
You're talking about narrowing it and filling that in and then talking to the butters.
Correct.
Right, so... I'm the butter.
Understand that. So, if that's something that we end up doing as part of this project, we'll be talking to you guys about, you know, how, you know, what this ends up looking like. You know, it's, it's obviously flat and level and it's paved now, so we would remove the pavement and loam and seed it. And if there was something else that, you know, needed to be done in there within reason, I'm sure we can accommodate that. But the concept, when you, when you extend through an old cul-de-sac, you typically remove the remains of the old cul-de-sac and you, you know, you loam and seed it, basically. It would remain town property unless the selectmen decided to change the layout of Oakview Trail and give the land to you. But that's something that the planning board couldn't do. It's something that the selectmen would have to do.
You could go to the Fern Ridge Development off of Cleveland where something was done fairly recently, in the last couple of years, basically. That's, that's what happened, but what was a cul-de-sac was reduced to part of the roadway and it was loomed and seeded and planted and...
Right, and you basically would extend, the straight part of Oakview Trail would just extend through the cul-de-sac and everything on the lollipop in front of your house would be removed, all that pavement would be removed.
And then my other question was, that main road, if it does go through, I mean, we, you have to look at Mountain Rock. There is no stop sign at the bottom of Mountain Rock and it, I mean, and there's not, exactly, there's not one at the end of the ridge either. So, there is a lot of people lying and turning those corners without even stopping and so it's great that you're looking at a traffic pattern on those new roads that you're considering, but you really have to look at Mountain Rock and Ridge.
Especially in the...
Yeah.
Which is what we're doing.
Daytime's not so bad, it's the evening's a difference.
Any other questions from anybody? With new thoughts?
Just one last question. So, maybe you're gonna address this now with new thoughts, but what's the follow-up to what's gone on here tonight? I mean, will there be another notification when additional documentation and plans...
You won't, you won't be notified? You're already notified for the first one, but if you go onto the clerk's website, you can be informed every time this meeting comes up.
Plus, you can announce it now.
And we're gonna announce the continuation date right now also, once we finish up.
That may be worth repeating, just because we sent the sign-up sheet, don't assume that you're gonna be contacted and informed of the next meetings and such, and I apologize for that, but we're just not resourced to let every, everybody know when things happen. You, you need to go on the, the site, the website.
State clerk's office?
Yes. The town clerk's office.
So, what would be the soonest that this would happen, in a month, two months?
We're gonna find out pretty shortly.
I'm sorry?
We're gonna find out pretty shortly tonight.
They're gonna talk about it now.
Are you folks all set with, Jeff, you all set with questions?
I am, I'm all set for now, yep.
So, I think if you heard things, Dan, I think the next step is to come up with some sketches involving open space and a cul-de-sac dead-end at one or both sides of the, the piece of property. And if, if our board has no objections, if you have any issues on the, the open space requirements that are causing a stumbling block, you could check with our plan array, but, I mean, if we're looking for this type of impact, then it goes hand in hand that we'll probably be willing to waive a lot of things to make this happen. And I guess the end result will be what, how good of a, of a development you sketch out there for us. So, don't assume that nothing is sacred that can't be waived as far as the open space goes. And you can tell from Gina, with just a quick response, you solve your wetland issue space just like that. So, you're welcome to use our resources to come up with something that everybody's gonna be happy with, including, um, Mr. Bobby. Okay?
Yes.
Any questions from you?
No, sir.
Very good. So, we will, Betsy, when, are you, want, how much time to come back? Do you wanna be at our meeting in a month from now or...
When are your upcoming meetings?
We haven't set our next meeting date yet.
How long will it take you to come up with?
Oh, inside of four weeks.
Inside of four weeks. When is our next meeting, Betsy?
We don't have one scheduled.
We don't have one scheduled, so that would be the beginning of February?
February 27th. Three weeks would be the 27th, John.
Or February 3rd.
Either one is fine with me, Mr. Chairman.
Let's take the 27th.
Okay. Michelle, you okay for the 27th?
Wait a minute, hold it.
Getting a consensus here on which date?
27th.
Probably traveling that week.
Well, you gotta be here, so, how about the 3rd of February?
Let's see, I have a board of selectmen meeting.
The 3rd?
Yeah. And, well, Wednesdays are, and, and Michelle, I mean, you can't, so you won't be here to participate in the audit, but she can't participate in the meetings anyways, but we have other business.
Yes, we should, right. We should make sure that she's here. Thursdays?
Thursday's fine with me.
Thursday, what, what date, Thursday? Say again, the 5th?
February 5th.
February 5th. Yeah, that's four and a half weeks, right? Can we go back a week? Oh, you're gonna, you'll be gone all week, the previous week?
I guess we wanna pull it up.
If it's, if it doesn't seem too full, then that's okay with me.
I could do the 22nd of January, but I'm not sure if the applicant's gonna be ready.
Yeah, that's too, too close. So, when's the earliest, at the end of January, beginning of February, we can get together?
Yeah, so, it looks like...
Available the 29th, Jeff, you're away a week.
Yeah. Most likely that's a planning.
5th?
5th?
Going once?
Yeah.
I'll be, I'll get you to the second, ma'am.
Thursday, the 5th.
So, is the 5th work for everybody?
You okay with the 5th?
It's okay.
And you're okay with the 5th?
Mm-hmm. So, we continue this to 7:30 on February, which day is the 5th?
Thursday.
Thursday, the 5th? And you'll be back, Dan, with some sketches for us?
Yes, I will.
Motion to, oh, first of all, a question, ma'am?
Yes, John, Sally Bestie, 9 Frederiksen Road. I just have a quick question about this whole approval process.
Yes.
Cleaning board?
Conservation. That's it, unless they need a special permit from the ZVA.
Okay, who does the final check off, like what meeting should be, like you're gonna do cleaning board, cleaning board, conservation is when do you stand with the conservation?
They haven't filed with us yet.
Oh.
So, that'll be up to them when they decide to...
This is a preliminary, so we wouldn't file our notice of intent with the commission until we had a definitive design. We may file an An-Rad application to...
It would be a great idea.
To look at the wetlands delineations. It's not, it's not required, but it's a good idea.
There is a stream coming out of that pond, you know?
I saw the comments, yeah.
Okay.
I guess what I wanna know is, is the same work, same go, same board, any kind of...
Not, not necessarily. They could be both going at the same time. Yes. And normally, they both do go at some point at the same time. Because he doesn't wanna get approval from us and then go to conservation and find out he's gonna change everything, so, okay. So, tend to motion to extend, to continue the public hearing on the 5th?
I move to continue the public hearing for Alexandra Estates until Thursday, February 5th at...
7:30?
7:30.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
February 5th, 7:30.
Thank you for your time.
So, you got, you'll have the plans to us? Thank you.
And you would, responding to John's request, would you at least stake out the center line of the roads here?
Yes.
And then we'll take a walk.
What's your availability, generally speaking, as far as... I know for the con...
I can do it anytime.
We're gonna take a three-minute break.
Yeah, exactly, exactly.
That's the best of both worlds.
Yeah, I mean, it's...
So, Toils and Farm Fox Run subdivision. So at our last meeting, we had voted that it was a major modification to take, we've taken a look at the drainage. So, kind of curious, don't have a public hearing open for it.
No, so, if I may?
Yeah, just quickly, we're gonna get into the microphone if we can just find out
what your thoughts are.
Okay. Hi, thank you. So at the last meeting, as you said, the board did vote for the stormwater improvements that we're working on, that will be a major modification, so we understand that. Our engineer, Mike Rosati, is here from Marshand and Associates tonight. I also have John Engdahl with me from Holti Homes tonight with me as well. We've made additional improvements to the stormwater improvement plan from the last planning board meeting, and Mike has some boards and some plans that we can share with you. And I think at this point, we've, we've taken the plan as far as we can. We think it's a thorough, comprehensive improvement plan, and we would like to get some feedback from the board tonight and really get permission or get your concurrence that we're ready to submit. So what we'd like to do is actually go right into the, after tonight's meeting, we'd like the next meeting to be the formal subdivision modification meeting, you know, advertised meeting. So I did go to the, I did go to the assessor today, and I got a butters list form, and we spoke with Betsy after our staff meeting we had today, and she gave us some guidance on, you know, how to file that, so we're ready to do that.
So process wise, are we allowed to hear any information before the modifications, before the public hearing?
No.
You can't hear your presentation unless it's part of the public hearing.
Informally, like we did at the last meeting, you know?
Mike, have you finished the drainage study?
We're planning on the study.
Okay, alright. As we've talked about, and I've talked about anyway, for months, the drainage study, done, goes to the consulting engineer, they review it, and hopefully, that's all done in time for a public hearing, so we can review the comments and see if it works. That seems to be the next step, that, so it's good that you're notifying the butters, et cetera, and, yeah.
I think Mike wanted to come in and just update you where we were at, and...
Now, I refuse to have my agent attend that meeting because you have a filing due with the conservation the other time, and we shouldn't be discussing public hearing information outside of the public hearing process. And what, now that I think of it, if you can in those plans, make sure that the resource lines are on those plans. Because everyone I see with the Maple Street work, it doesn't seem to have the resource lines on there, okay? But that's the next step, you gotta get that done, get it reviewed, and in the meantime, it sounds like you're filing for the public hearing process, and once it's done and checked, you can follow with the conservation commission, and you'll be on your way.
So we're, I mean, so at this point, we're ready to finalize the report, finalize our plan. So we have the planning board's modification filing that we're going to proceed with, and then as far as the conservation commission, we have the enforcement order that was signed last meeting, and that requests drainage study, so...
You've gotta follow a notice of intent to move forward. Do you understand what that is?
A notice of intent?
Yeah.
I do.
Okay, because that involves a public hearing, a notification of a butters, and everything else.
Yeah.
So if I could just raise one other issue, just with a lot of the time that we've been spending up at the subdivision and getting familiar with all the issues, there's been a new issue that's been brought to our attention that is going to need attention, not tonight, probably not part of the public hearing, but definitely related to future release of lots. And that is the fact, and, you know, none of us noticed it until now, the fact that you have the wastewater treatment system and that you have the piping from the private homes running to the wastewater treatment system that are under the public roads.
Right.
Without any kind of easements or anything put in place. So right now, it's a town, you know, eventually a town-owned road with a public treatment system running underneath it.
Private, private treatment, private treatment.
Right, so, so we talked a little about that today, and subsequent to our meeting today, I went back and spoke to my office. So typically, what happens, what happens is, prior to the town accepting a roadway, you know, all of the legal documents, there's a street acceptance plan, there's as-built plans, there's the deeds, there's easements, there's all sorts of a package of legal papers that, you know, our attorney creates and town council reviews, and all of those details get worked out at that time.
No, they don't, no, they don't. The easements and the transfer of easements and roadways, that paperwork is done. That paperwork was reviewed, and the paperwork is very unspecific about the maintaining of the private sewer lines in the public roadway. So this is not something that's done with the transfer of easement rights in the roadway. That's standard. This is an issue that's been consciously, unconsciously left out of the equation that has to be addressed by the subdivision owners and the town. And what seems to complicate it, where you have a homeowners association. I don't know what your homeowners document looks like, but it sounds like you may need amendment to your association based on the acceptance of the maintenance of your private sewer lines in the town road. And anytime, from my understanding, you change protective covenants or a homeowners association and add detail to it, or obligations or responsibilities, you have to have a sign-off of a percentage of the ownership in the association, part of which would be the homes you've already sold in Norfolk. So my suggestion is you start to look at this pretty quickly.
Yeah, so, so we'll look at that, but the way our association is set up, they're, they're, they're set up to operate and maintain the wastewater treatment facility.
Excellent, because the paperwork and the transfer process, which is submitted initially, does not address that, so that has to be changed.
Is it the facility and the distribution, or just the facility?
It's the wastewater treatment system. It's the, it's a system and the, and the distribution system. So it's actually, it will be owned and maintained by the homeowners association.
But like I said, it did not address that in the legal paperwork.
In the deed, in the draft deed that was provided?
Yes.
So those are, those are draft deeds, but the final one...
Yeah, but that agreement has to be done as part of your covenant with the town before you move forward. That's, that's an outstanding issue that's gonna be addressed immediately, can't be put off. That should've been done before the subdivision gets started, along with this drainage study.
I think we all agree on that.
Okay, alright.
I mean, we discussed some concerns, whether we still have things to work through, I guess it depends on each board member probably has an opinion in terms of Warren Drive and some of the observations and some of the reports that have been filed. But, you know, to the extent that you've got those wastewater pipes under what will ultimately be a public road, and once it's accepted, I mean, we have to have that totally understood in terms of the responsibilities for repair and maintenance of that infrastructure. And I believe the material of construction, I believe it's plastic, am I correct? So to the extent that there were concerns about the materials that were used in terms of trenches and backfilling and such, whether or not those concerns extend to that piping, I don't personally know. But to the extent that those concerns were raised vis-à-vis that roadway, and it is plastic piping, it just raises the level of concern that I have, that we have to have that totally understood in terms of whose responsibility it is to repair that infrastructure and deal with the paving and such that coincide with repairs, if in fact that date, I think it's inevitable it will come, it's just a matter of how long before there's some type of issue that...
You understand the issue, Mike?
I did understand, I think, this afternoon.
Super. Because normally, the engineer drafts up all of the transfer documents for the transfer of roadway and everything, so...
Yeah, I think that was all done via two...
It was, yeah, it was, but it looks like it has to be amended to cover this aspect of it.
We'll look into that, because the ownership and maintenance should be the homeowners association of the sewer facilities.
You got it.
It's privately owned and maintained, and the homeowners association is set up to do that.
And in terms of the levels of funds which exist, I mean, and this is something, I'm not an attorney, so I can't speak to, but if there's an issue, it gets to be pretty expensive, you know, to deal with an urgent issue in the road where there's cutting of pavement, excavation, repairs. I mean, I don't know what that looks like in terms of the level of funding to ensure that the town is protected, but that's ultimately what we wanna understand.
Okay, yep. So the homeowners association has sewer escrow agreements and sewer maintenance agreements, escrow accounts and stuff like that that have been set up to do that, so.
So you're gonna get the paperwork changed, so we can send it off to town council to approve it?
Yeah, yeah.
You all set?
And then I assume the public hearing will be at our February 5th meeting?
As long as I get everything in in time.
That's, we just had our next meeting, February 5th, which is a Thursday, so it's about three and a half weeks from tonight.
So backing up from there, when would we need to submit our information?
How many days is it, Betsy?
Need about three weeks.
So it'll be this Thursday? Oh, I'm sorry, no, you have, we're four and a half weeks away, so probably next Thursday, the 15th?
I would need it by January 19th at the latest.
It's a Monday.
Oh, that's a holiday.
That's Martin Finkin.
Probably that Thursday, the 15th. Next Thursday.
But as soon as the drainage report is done, you get right over to PSC, so get working on that. And if there is any minor tweaking, hopefully, it can be done before the public hearing, you know, so, okay.
Okay.
Yeah, so, I don't wanna belabor the point, but, you know, I did wanna follow up on the lot release request from the last meeting. Am I getting the sense from the board doesn't wanna talk about releasing any additional lots?
Well, let me read this.
I think it's really just based upon the fact that we had asked for the...
Let me read the statement from the minutes that I reviewed a couple of days ago from our chairman, Steve McLean. Steve said that the board has to review the new drainage plan and have a hearing before releasing any lots. So that was stated at the last get-together we had, so...
And I think in light of the new information, wanting to make sure that we have assurances in place for another issue, you know, they just seem to be compounding upon themselves, so that, you know, to be prudent to release more lots when we have some tidying up and paperwork to do on lots that have already been released, the public roads that have already been accepted, we should, would be another reason why.
So the roads have not already been accepted, like, did I just...
Well, they're substantially complete, is I think what Michelle was stating.
Right.
No, they haven't been accepted, no.
Right, yeah, okay. Okay, well, we understand the, I mean, we understand the situation, we're doing the best we can, so. And I heard about the sewer today, and, you know, again, that was a draft document that was created by, you know, a former entity, and when it comes time for street acceptance, our attorneys would get involved, and they would work with town council, and those documents would be finalized, but apparently, you want that to...
Nothing personal, that would never come up. That's an automatic transfer of easements and rights, and that wouldn't even be looked at, then. This should've been done day one, is, I think, I'm sorry, I forgot your name.
If he tells you, you'll remember it, John.
I don't, thank you, John. As you know, that, it's a formality at the end when the transfers are done. So this should've been addressed way back when, because it's a little uncommon to have a private treatment and having your piping on public roads. Normally, the piping is kept on the, on easement on the private front lots that stay out of the town's jurisdiction totally. But in this case, the piping was placed in the right of way, which presents this problem. So it's a little, little uncommon.
And just so everyone understands why, there are some people in town that wash these things on cable access, because in a situation of water, there's, there's funding for water to be maintained, the water, the infrastructure to be maintained, and various preventive maintenance and things of that nature. So that funding source does not exist for that infrastructure, for the wastewater, which will be ultimately under the accepted road, the public road. So for the people at home, that's why we're so concerned, because we don't have a funding source.
Right, and I agree, and from our perspective, I mean, it's privately owned and maintained sewer facilities that are part of the homeowners, and they should have the, they need the right to maintain their sewer facilities, not the town, so. It's sort of like a gas line or an electric facility, it's...
So as I understand it, there's no contentious issue, you're just in the cleaning up the paperwork?
That's right, yeah.
Alright.
Well, thank you again for your time.
Thank you. Alright.
See you on the 5th.
Do we have the time?
It's probably depending on when he gets his paperwork, and Betsy will set it depending on other agenda items.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Yep, thanks.
So I've been a farm, we have our decision in for the sign. Do that quickly?
Do they bring a package?
Yes, send a package.
Can you start her coughing now? Can you start her cough line now?
No, I can start.
Another round. You got the signing sheet there? That's a... Yep. Sheet to sign?
Yeah.
Motion to approve it for our state. Well, okay. Don't we already approve it?
You haven't seen the decision written.
Formalities, John. Don't we already approve it?
Well, one of the questions I have is, we talked about, you know, in terms of not trying to set a precedent here, the fact that there were multiple buildings on the site, and because of the multiple buildings, we could have multiple signs. Do we need to reference that in the decision?
I don't think so, because that's basic zoning.
It's within the zoning law.
That's allowed, so I think we're all set.
Okay.
I understand your point, that makes sense.
We were trying to be very clear about not setting a precedent, so I don't know if we need to document that.
The bigger issue might be everyone that comes with a sign, I was going to look them through. Yeah.
Well, they had a pretty darn good cause, though, you know?
Yes, they did.
So if others have an equally good cause...
And so did the other ones. Exactly. Yes, they did. But the third one that comes in won't remember.
Yeah, right.
Michelle brings up a good point, the rationale for why we granted this.
Granted what?
While this sign was approved, so...
Well, they're saying it was within the bylaw, so we didn't have to grant anything.
It's, well, I think because of the multiple buildings on the site, which allowed this to happen. I mean, does it state that anywhere in here to clarify? So future board, it doesn't have to answer questions about why this was approved, and their project may not be...
The first special permit criteria, that's kind of the general one that says that the use is in harmony with the general purpose and intent of the bylaw, we could add something there that makes reference to that.
I would agree with you.
Well, didn't we actually look at the bylaw that Tom found?
He did, he informed us, and that's why we just stopped.
Right. But should we sign it here, that it's in accordance with it? Just...
I would refer to the number.
Well, F-9A18 is the one that...
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, well, that allows you wide discretion to grant additional signs anyway, without, as long as you think it's appropriate. But this other provision that is more specific, that says to... Is that the one you're talking about?
The sign regulation, the specific sign regulation. What I'm talking about is, we... There was a revelation that because there's more than one building on the site, that they can have more than one sign, and so...
Right, because they do have more than one sign.
Yeah. And I don't know that it says anything in the decision to clarify that that was a consideration, but it's an important consideration.
Well, it doesn't have to, but if you want to put her in, it certainly doesn't hurt to add something.
Yeah, I see it, one free standing sign for each separate building.
Mm-hmm.
So I can just add that to this.
Is that in that same paragraph?
No, it's F-9B1C4.
Fair enough. So you can add that reference to this? Yeah, okay.
I remember that tomorrow.
Otherwise, I didn't have any other comments. I read through this decision, and I think it was...
That's a good catch.
Michelle's wide awake, and it's almost 11 o'clock. She's doing well today.
It's a whole different energy when I get to watch you guys.
I thought you were going to speak. I want you to stand up and say that I want it approved.
I didn't dare, I'd be lynched.
Exactly. Oh, God. Exactly. You're too smart for that.
Actually, that doesn't apply to residential districts.
Yeah, right. Oh, no.
Yeah.
So I think we could still vote on this decision without one amendment.
Before you do, on second thought, that provision does not apply in residential districts, which this is... But the other one, the other one that we already referenced, is not limited to any particular district. It just says you can approve additional or larger signs as appropriate.
And it's already in there.
It's already in there.
Okay.
You may want to just leave that out.
Yeah, we'd definitely move that out.
We can do whatever we want, doesn't get out of the...
There you go.
We can put that on Jeff's copy.
There you go.
All right. So we're just going to accept them as is then?
Yeah.
Do you want to make a motion?
Okay. I move to accept the special permit application decision number 2014-06 on the Bena Farm-centered signs.
Excellent.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. And do we have something on the...
We have to sign this thing now.
Yeah. Do we have something on cottage car wash?
Excepted, noted below.
Oh, the as-built.
Yeah, this is supposed to be...
We just have to sign the as-built plan, or do you have something for us to review?
There was a note here that came through, right?
Today, I didn't... Oh, here it is. Oh, yep, here it is.
The only issue that I thought might be an issue was number two. I don't have a copy of the plan, unfortunately, but...
Oh, I've got a copy in front of me.
Yeah. There were a couple of minor things that were different on the site when we approved them, but, for instance, the vacuum.
Do you have a chimney plan?
Yeah, yeah. And I don't know if this is an issue, but the curb return extends onto the Joplin property, essentially.
Probably an issue.
And it would be on the other side.
Yeah.
Because this is the property line.
Is that in the right-of-way?
It's within the right-of-way, but I think that you generally don't...
State right-of-way?
It is, it is.
Why would that be a problem, then?
Yeah, if it's in the right-of-way, why is it a problem?
Should be okay. If it was on private property... It's okay with the town. It's okay with us, it's okay.
Yeah, I wanted to check that.
If we're on the other side of that dot, that'd be a different story, right?
Yeah, yeah. It's not a direct encroachment. Okay, thank you.
The only... Yeah, because you extend the curb into that area routinely, that's where it terminates, is at the state, in the state right-of-way. Because you can't get to the road without going into the state right-of-way.
The survey was actually very good. I mean, they went through all the content requirements, and I went out to the site and I couldn't find any discrepancies. It was very thorough, so as far as we're concerned, it looked good.
So then you had mentioned the vacuums and...
Yeah, you thought that was a positive change, right?
I thought so, too, yeah. Basically, you could pull into a vacuum space from the garage, and then, well, instead of having to back out into conflicting traffic, yeah.
That's probably where they did it, that makes sense.
And also, the other thing was, there was a little island here, so basically, cars can now park directly parallel to the building without having to pull in it. Yeah, so I thought both were improvements.
Is that the curb bumpers that you were talking about there?
Right, yeah. Jason, do the buildings.
Okay.
So Dave, question I have. You know, I think it's a nice project. One of the unfortunate things, I think there are some restrictions now because of the noise for the dryer. And I may be mistaken, but I think I raised that question about the drying and whether it was going to be inside like another car wash, and I referenced one over on 109, and I think my understanding, at least at that point, was that it was. So I think it's unfortunate, the situation that exists, where it isn't inside, and therefore now there's a restriction. I'm guessing it was the Board of Health, there was a noise, evidently, there must have been noise complaints, and the Board of Health typically would deal with that type of issue. So after a certain time, they can't use the dryers for drying the cars. I think it's unfortunate, I just put it out there because it was discussed at some level of detail, and I thought it'd be a non-issue at that point, but the installation is different than what I anticipated, and so to the extent that this is an as-built, I just want it as a point of record that it's different than what I think the board thought it was going to be.
It's in the zoning bylaw, I think.
So you pull your car in, right, after it's done washed? The way it operates now is you drive out of the door opening as it's drying, so it's a dry, fixed dryer, and as you drive out...
The dryer is inside the building.
The dryer is set sort of at the exit point of the door, so as you're driving out the exit door, it's drying your car as you drive out, where they have other models where the door is still in its down position. So the door has to be open-
Yeah.
...because you're exiting, so you can hear that dryer come on, it's quite loud.
Yeah.
So there are other models where the door stays closed-
Yes, I understand.
...and your car stays in the bay, and then the dryer maybe moves around.
That's helpful. The way Jeff described it, it sounded like the dryer itself was outside the building.
It's just at the edge.
I've been through it, went through it once some months ago, just to...
It's not behind a closed door.
And the door has to be open, because you have to get your car out.
Because the car is driving through it.
You're going to have to extend the building to put the door further out so you can get through the drying system, right? That's not an as-built thing, that's an operational thing, that's somebody else's fight.
Yeah, I mean, to the extent it came up during the conversations in front of this board, because we get involved in terms of hours of operation and things like that.
Yeah, it was interesting, because we'd actually raised the comment of the front vacuums and the noise that might have...
Right, and you thought it was going to be the vacuums, which were the problems, and it's not the vacuum, it's the dryer.
Didn't even consider the...
But, I mean, I hope people use the car wash, just use it between whatever, 8:00 AM and whatever the... I'm not sure what the curfew is.
I think it's 10:00 PM now, it's from 10:00 to 8:00 PM.
Eight to 10:00, 8:00 AM to 10:00 PM.
Something like that. Anyway, all right, so do we have to vote on it, or do we just sign it?
I think you just vote to recommend-
The acceptance of...
That the plant, as-built building department grants...
Did we send a Mylar on that? Could be recorded.
I don't... Do you know, they don't record the as-built plan, do they?
I don't think so.
I don't ever remember anybody doing that.
Yeah, I don't either.
You just keep the as-built one.
I mean, if they need it, they'll bring me in, they'll bring me a Mylar, and we can sign it.
For now, we just need a motion.
A motion to what? To accept the as-built plans for the cottage car wash.
And recommend permanent occupancy.
And recommend permanent occupancy.
To the building official.
He's already given them a permit.
What was the last part he added? To the building official.
To the...
Oh. All right, so I have made that motion. I second that. John seconded it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, and the last thing we need to do is review and approve the minutes?
Make the motion to approve the minutes for Tuesday, December 9th, 2014.
And you review them?
Yes, I am. I second that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
And then, just a reminder, next week, we're due to meet from the night, right?
That's just the Bena Farm signature.
Can anybody remind me, how many firms are we interviewing?
Interviews will come up as a subject. We're meeting the 13th, right?
Weston and Sampson.
Ray's bringing treats.
Yeah.
Do I have to buy pizza?
What's the third one? Was it Betta?
I got it.
Beta Group.
B-E-T.
ETA.
I have the rest. Thank you. 5:30? I'll do my best to get here at 5:30. I'll text if I'm running a little bit late.
Is it 5:30, is that what it is?
The first one, I scheduled them every hour, 5:30, 6:30, and 7:30.
So 5:30, all right.